To get everybody to their seats. We can get started. Talk to him. We could set that bar right here. Michelle, is the other Michelle here? Okay, so she'll be coming down. I'll just stop in the middle or something. I can only guess. We still have five. So, we're okay. City council meeting of August 22nd, 2011 now come to order. Remember all times indicated next agenda items are approximate start times only. Make sure I've done the same thing. Please turn off all cell phones for the duration. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Moreno. Councilman Benson. Councilwoman Carson. Mayor Potem Snyder.
Mayor Potem Snyder has an excused absence for this evening.
Mayor Nutell.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McElDowney. And Councilman Bullock.
And Councilman McElDowney is also on an excused. Do you want to call the other two names and show that they are here at 6:32?
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Mayor and council, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I don't know, did you? Did everybody push the red button?
I did. I did.
Okay. Will the audience please rise for a moment of silence and then join me in reciting the Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Will staff please pass the mic around for introductions?
Joy Bishop.
Gene Lefel, Board of Adjustment.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Michelle Rogers, City Managers Department.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks and Recreation.
Paul Heebink, Parks and Recreation, Buffalo Run Golf Course.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Heather Spencer, Human Resources.
Roger Tinkenberg, Finance.
Darren Sterling, City Engineer.
Ellen Haug.
Greg Clemens, Public Works Department.
Chuck Wolfersberger, Commerce City Citizen.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Brittany Morris Saunders, Economic Development Director.
Thank you very much. Cheryl, do we have anyone signed up for tonight? Okay. Next item on the agenda is citizen communication. The roster is made available at the table at the entrance to council. When I call your name, will you please come forward, state your name and address for the record? You're reminded these speakers limited to three minutes. City council is reminded that they are not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions, express concern when appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get the necessary information to solve problems. First person on the list is Charles Wolpenberger. There, now you are.
My name's Chuck Wolfersberger. I'm, I live at 9605 East 112th Drive in Commerce City. The purpose of my visit today is, I just briefly want to put forward a proposal. I am a resident of Commerce City for the past seven years. I've served on my homeowners board for the last four years. And I'm a CPA for the past 15 years. And I'm looking at possibly going into business within Commerce City sometime early next year. And the purpose of my being here is, I wanted to try to see if I could get Commerce City, get the city council's support for what I'm going to propose to do within the city here as well as, but quickly, I guess, to begin is, what I'm looking at doing is going into property management for neighborhoods and also providing consulting services. And what, the reason I'm looking at doing this is our homeowners association is in the process of likely converting from a homeowner's association to a metropolitan district. Obviously, we have not submitted a proposal yet to Commerce City to make that happen, but, but as we've done the research, we've found that there's been significant financial benefits that accrue to neighborhoods who would make such a conversion. For our neighborhood alone in Dunes Park, we'll save probably close to $700,000 over the next 10 years on a budget that's only about $130,000 a year. So, there's significant financial savings that we're going to experience. And also, there's, there's other benefits that accrue to a neighborhood by having a metropolitan district run and operate the common areas and covenant enforcement and so forth over a homeowners association. And so, that's why I'm here today. I have a written proposal that I'm putting together that I'd like to submit and distribute to the city council, so you can read more of the details of that. But what I'd really like to do is to be able to go to those homeowners associations who are maybe a bit more financially distressed. And if I could get the support of city council saying that, you know, if you agree that, yes, it sounds like a good idea, then I'm also talking with the Department of Local Government and also with the homeowners association boards and would like to put those proposals before homeowners boards and, you know, those interested. I would provide the consulting services to take that process from start to finish, from a conversion from a homeowners association to a metropolitan district, so.
Okay.
Probably gone over my three minutes, but.
Now you are. Want to thank you for coming in. Mr. Flannery, I'm assuming that it's probably going to go in Mr. Gaylor's house. You need, you're going to need to talk to them to find out the legality of that, and then they will bring us something back if it so fits. Is that okay with you, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's going to be better with Mr. Flannery and Mr. Gaylor first.
Okay.
Because they're more in touch with what you're asking to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we can, we can set up a meeting internally with, with our staff, finance, and the attorney's office.
Okay.
And go through the proposal.
And yeah, and you'll make sure that they have your information and you have theirs. Thank you, sir.
And congratulations on, that was some great publicity on the Denver Post that I saw yesterday, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next person on the list is Gene Lefel.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry, where'd I come from?
I had my button pushed. Just wanted to make a comment.
Mr. Benson.
Thank you. I wanted to ask of Mr. Gaylor, do you know off the top of your head what the legalities are of forming a special district within city limits of another jurisdiction? What would those requirements be? Is there any limitation on the ability of those citizens to be able to do that?
There's no legal limitation on that, so that's a viable topic for discussion.
I mean, all they would have to do is to.
Well, there's, there's a process.
Have an election.
Have to submit, they have to have an election, and they have to submit a service plan which talks about the financial impacts of the district, what its purposes are and so forth. That's the kind of thing that we would be talking about with.
Good.
With the gentleman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno.
Charles, just a quick question. You mentioned that it was the Dunes neighborhood. Could you just provide me with the name of the HUA?
Yes, it's the Dunes Master Owners Association.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next person on the list. Up, there you are. Evening, Gene. How are you this evening?
I'm doing just fine. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Gene Lefel, 6530 Brighton Boulevard, Commerce City, Colorado. That's the Garden Terrace subdivision established in 1922. I'm here again tonight to talk about that biological waste treatment facility that's coming to our city in a pretty big hurry here, up near I-76 and 88th Avenue. And I brought some, some things I think the council might find interesting. This is one of the types of bags that they're going to be transporting that waste in. And I'd really like to let everybody, matter of fact, I'm going to donate this to the city. See how heavy duty this bag is. I'm sure nothing could possibly get out of that. It's pretty thin. And I also have some stickers in case you have anything that's really dangerous around your place. And I'd like to give this bag to the council if I may, and they can all examine it and see how heavy duty it is. But anyhow, I want to tell you that we had 35 people come to our meeting last Tuesday night. None of them seem to be in favor of this waste treatment facility. I don't think anybody else is. But they're going to be going before the Planning Commission in Brighton this Thursday, August 25th, at 1:30 PM. And I would like to encourage any citizens of our city, city council staff, whoever might be concerned, about having this type of waste, biologically hazardous waste, processed in an area that soon will be part of our city. I just don't think it's a good idea. You know, they've, they've changed the zoning on that property from agricultural to I-2, despite most of the surrounding properties are residential. We've been through those types of problems here in the city before, where we've had residential that abutted industrial users. This is going to generate a lot of truck traffic, a lot of hours. It's just not really a suitable thing for our future residents to have really put right by them. You might recall there was a resident, at least recently, that complained about a lot of diesel smoke at his house, Mr. Bill Jones. This guy's going to have as many, if not more, trucks coming in and out of this place at all kinds of crazy hours. It's just a poor thing. So, I'm asking everybody that's concerned about having this in our city to please come up and visit the Planning Commission this Thursday in Brighton and tell them that in person, that perhaps you don't feel comfortable with having biologically hazardous waste hauled from Cheyenne and Pueblo and all points in between, brought to our city to be processed and then ultimately, quite likely disposed out at the Tower Road landfill, maybe right near your home. And when they find out this stuff wasn't as safe as they thought it is, that's going to be a real big problem. We just dealt with that at another property here in the immediate area where they had dumped a lot of stuff for years and years and years. Please come to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did I see Michelle come in? Oh, there she is. A little break from the, Mr. Benson.
Yes, thank you. I know, Mr. Lefel, you were referring to the Brighton, but you're referring to the Adams County Planning Commission, not the Brighton Planning Commission, right? I mean.
Well, perhaps I did misspeak on that. That is the Adams County Planning Commission.
Right.
And I might add in their packet there recommending approval for this facility.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And that is at the Adams County governmental, the new governmental building up there on Sable?
Yes, I don't know the exact address, and it looks like they perhaps have failed to place that on here. But yes, it is the new facility. They have, as a matter of fact, a very, very nice chambers up there, theater-type seating.
And I know we have, the city has sent a letter to Adams County voicing our disapproval of this facility. I'm wondering, are we going to have, is anybody going to be at this meeting officially representing the city to make sure that they're aware of that letter and make some of the good points? That was a very excellent letter, I thought, composed by our staff.
We will have staff there, and it is on your calendar, and it is on your sheet. The address is 4430 South Adams County Parkway.
Right.
In that building.
But do we have somebody that's going to be designated to speak before the commission on behalf of the city?
They will speak, yes, just as they did last time.
And that letter is included in this packet, sir.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what happened last time, though.
It was a coordinated effort between the council and staff. Jim Hayes from Community Development attended.
But somebody will be there speaking on behalf of Commerce City?
Again, yes.
Does the council need to give approval to do that?
I don't think so, they already have.
Okay, good.
Mr. Moreno.
Sorry, can you take me up?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I want to take a short, not a short break, just a short out-of-the-agenda item. Ms. Halsted, congratulations on seven years today. Thank you. Your, your husband has been out of town, I guess, so seven years of marriage is wonderful. For staff, there are, there's a little surprise for Michelle in the back room that you can go back and get during a break, so. And you can thank your particular staff for this. Okay. Next item, there's just one resolution on the agenda for tonight that requires a voice-vote. It's Resolution 2011-49, a resolution approving extension of the rebates for economic development. Mr. Flannery, we're going to have someone come up and explain that again? I think this is absolutely wonderful.
Yes. I'd like to ask Brittany Morris come forward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development. Oh, sorry, Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development for Commerce City. I wanted to ask for your support in extending the incentive program through October 31st. It is set to expire on September 1st, so in about a week. I will give you a quick summary about our progress with the incentive program. To date, you have approved incentives for 24 businesses, which will spur capital investments of $61,485,002. The jobs that will be created from the amount you've incentivized is 565, and that was incentives that you approved above $2.8 million. So, $2.8 million is incentivizing $61.4 million in capital investment. We are asking for this extension September 1st through October 31st in order for us to be able to go back to the Business Advisory Committee, the Economic Development Business Advisory Committee, and the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee to ask for their input on a permanent incentive program recommendation. That recommendation will come to you sometime in October. We're shooting for October 10th, but don't hold it to me right now. It will be before October 31st, however. I do ask for your support for this extension. We have received calls from a number of businesses who would like to submit during that time. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you have before voting.
You know, it is absolutely wonderful. I absolutely love this thing. It's doing so much good for us. Ms. Teeter.
I think it's absolutely wonderful, and it is, I think everyone on council does, and I am ready to make the motion.
Got a couple of people, but I'll let you make, make that when we get to it.
Ms. Carson.
Out of that, can you, and I don't know if you know this, you probably do, you seem to know everything we ask you. How many of the businesses that have already been established in Commerce City have taken advantage of this?
The majority of the businesses that have taken advantage that you have approved are existing businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Benson.
Well, I was prepared to make the motion too, but if Ms. Teeter makes the motion, I'll second it.
Mr. Moreno.
Just a quick word. Really want to commend you and your staff for putting this program together. We got some great coverage in the Denver Post recently and was described as Commerce City's own recovery act, which is something that I've never thought of or considered it, but it really has been in promoting jobs and expansion of our current businesses. So, appreciate your time and effort on this.
Thank you, and I would be remiss not to thank Michelle Hell. She's not here right now, but she is our program administrator. And if it's okay, Mayor, I do have one more stat to give you.
You're on.
We did have 779 home improvement applications processed, and the total incentives for home improvement is $66,319.60.
Terrific. Thank you so much. We are so excited. Okay, Ms. Teeter. Is that okay? We'll make the motion to approve that, Mr. Gaylor? Is that okay? Ms. Teeter.
Yes, move to approve Resolution 2011-49.
Mr. Benson.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the extension. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those.
Title?
Oh, title. Oh, why don't we do a title?
Right.
That would be a really good idea.
Title reads, "Resolution Approving Extension of Rebates and Benefits for Economic Development."
Now, we've had a motion and a second, and the title's been read. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Is there anything we would ever tell you no for? Not that we've found yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we move on to the excitement of the day. The 2010 budget presentation. Mr. Flannery, I imagine you're going to start us off and introduce Mr. Tinkenberg.
I think you said 2010, I think it's 2012.
2012? Let's do 2012s. 2010s was okay, 11 was better, and 12 will be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. We have several departments presenting tonight, but I'd like to ask Tom Aker, Deputy City Manager, to kick off the festivities.
Now am I on?
Good evening, Mayor and Members of City Council. Tonight, we've got Human Resources, Economic Development, Communications, Parks, Recreation and Golf, and Public Works here to present their budgets. Next week, we'll wrap it up with the remaining departments, and you'll get into your legislative budget, and we'll also have a discussion on the CIP budget, followed by a discussion, as you requested, on the recycling and the trash hauling discussion to continue that. I do have one item to ask council. Several weeks ago, we sent out the schedule, but also request on if council would prefer to have an electronic copy of the budget book for the September 12th meeting, or if you would prefer a paper copy. The electronic version will have the ability for you to annotate or make notes in it. So, if you could send myself or Michelle Rogers an email on your preference, that would help us in getting the budget books prepared. For staff, it's really, does not make a difference, but we wanted to give you the option this year.
Okay. Before you go any further, how thick is the paper one?
The paper one is typically what we've given you, the pretty thick three-ring binder.
That answers my question, thank you.
With that, we'll bring up Heather Spencer, and she'll start with Human Resources budget discussion. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, the Human Resource Department is a relatively small part of the financial pie, so I was told I get three pages, no pictures, so it's relatively dry and boring. Want to start off by explaining a little bit of the department's structure. We have a small staff, consists of an administrative specialist, and that person's duties are pretty much the backbone in keeping all the records that deal with all of the employees, pretty much, does all the applicant tracking, is responsible for record retention as it relates to any HR documents, and is really the conduit for providing finance and payroll information. We also have three senior HR generalists, and each of them work independently with different departments that are assigned to them, as well as they have their own area of expertise. So, for example, one of our senior HR generalists is the representative who works with the police department, as well as that individual is the one that handles like all the short-term and long-term FMLA, that sort of thing. So, each one of the generalists does have their own areas of expertise and specialty that they work on, as well as their departments. We have an HR technician, who is the person who is responsible for all the data entry, is right now working on the software upgrades that we've been diligently moving towards, and also carries out the process and the plan that we're putting together for the organizational training, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And then, of course, the HR director position, with a proposed budget of $718,433. And then, we, within the HR department, there are four areas, or actually, I would say, three more areas in the budget. And that would include the risk management position, or the risk management budget. That position is responsible for the safety culture, is really looking into how to improve the protections that the city will need moving forward and conducting business. This person or this position is also doing a lot of fiscal analysis with regards to what are the best deductibles, that type of thing, when we're looking at renewing our workers' comp and our property casualty. And then, really creating a proactive preparedness for a culture of risk and safety. And there, the proposed budget is $81,275. And then, we have the Employee Activity Committee, which is fairly new under the HR budget this, this year and the coming year. And they pretty much function on their own, in that they have the vending machines, which I'm sure you're familiar with, that raise the funds, that host the holiday party and that type of thing. But we just needed a governing department to kind of look at their expenditures and that sort of thing, so that's why it's under the Human Resource Budget. And then, we have the Organizational Development Budget, or piece, that is working on establishing the city's mandatory trainings that we would need for any type of audit purposes, like SIRS that comes in and does an annual audit, as well as we use those monies for specific coaching and professional development. And then, that will also be the foundation of the division that will be putting together a customer service training program. And with that, I'll move to the next slide, showing the highlights. You'll see on one side is the organizational approach, and then, the other side talks about how that is to match or mirror with some of the city council goals. So, moving right into the risk and safety culture, some of the goals for that division are to get from the departments written procedures, also really establishing a communication and safety training strategy. Investigations and prevention reviews are already on their way, but we have the need to make sure we have a dedicated individual for any type of workplace injuries, that there's someone that can go out and investigate how those injuries occurred and how we're going to look at putting preventative measures in. The biggest one is the awareness, is really creating the safety culture. We already have an established safety team, but this position will be focused more on getting efficiencies out of that safety team and really directing their, their mission and what their goals will be. And then, obviously, management and oversight of the property casualty and workers' compensation claims. We feel like those goals, or those projects, are meshing with city council's goals, in that it will establish some consistency with the customer service model. Of course, it's going to be evaluating and limiting financial risk. And then, it's going to build and bridge some connectivity in the safety culture of awareness and getting employees all on the same page, whether they're in Public Works or Parks and Rec. And then, it's really a model that I think will shine towards the health, wellness, and quality of life. That's important for city council goals. Moving down to organizational training, again, I have spoken just briefly about a customer service program. We're working with a customer service team that was established. We're working with a customer service team that was established to put together kind of the philosophy or the structure for what would be important for the city to have as a customer service certification model. And with that, it is felt that those targets for organizational training will provide the framework for a business-friendly model. It builds that communication and pride, and then it's a coordinated and consistent flow of information about Commerce City. Last page is pretty much the foundation of the Human Resource Department, and what we're going to be focusing on in the upcoming year is an onboarding and orientation enhancements. And that is not only to work on retaining employees after they've been with the city, to go back and do the onboarding interviews, finding out what information do they still need, or what information can we help them to get better acclimated with the city, as well as enhancing the actual orientation process. When they come in that first day, they're overwhelmed with a whole bunch of information. So we want to be able to provide other resources and avenues to not only introduce them to the leaders of this organization, but also just mix it up and make it a little more interesting and fun. So we're working on putting together a video with communications. We'd like to roll out the employee, the new employee policies, and then we've been working, as I mentioned before, diligently on enhancing some of our software, and I think those efficiencies will really empower some departments to look up their own information. And with that, the last and final thing that the Human Resource Department would really like to target in 2012 is a health risk management program. We've been fortunate enough to partner with Pinnacle to do a five-to-10-year study with them at no cost to the city, which allows us to roll out a health risk management program that will really be beneficial to employees, and it'll set some baselines for us to be able to establish what are the areas of risk in terms of employee health. So with that being said, how that meshes with the city council goals, again, I think this really models the wellness and quality of life concept, and it will really add to the bottom line when it comes to the financial plan, if we can get employees actively looking at their health and wellness. It'll not only contribute to our workers' comp claims being reduced, but also, and when we're looking at renewal processes for our benefits plans, it will certainly drive those costs down if we have employees that are healthy. And again, just coming up with a plan that will deliver consistent customer service, and being a conduit for the communication that builds pride and connectivity through the internal channels. In closure, the overall HR budget has a reduction from 2011 to 2012, that's approximately $20,000. Again, remembering that my financial pie is fairly small, that's a huge piece. We did look at how can we better target our recruiting efforts and advertising efforts, so that's how we were able to reduce some of that, as well as we were looking at more targeted methods for career development of our HR folks, and where we're collecting industry-type, specific information, like we have memberships to CML and SHRM, and we're utilizing those resources, because they're usually free when we have memberships with them, for best practices and seminars and that type of thing. So that's all I've brought today, any questions?
Thanks for your presentation, Heather. On the risk management position, I believe the number that you have here differs from what we preliminary approved in the budget. Is this number including benefits? Is that why it's a little higher?
The position and the, actually, it includes more than just the position salary. It does include benefits, computer allocation, includes some risk management programming, it includes association dues, office supplies, those types of things as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Ms. Teeter.
Yes, you look very nice this evening, and thank you for all you do for the city. Mr. Marino asked the question I was going to ask. My second question, employee appreciation, $13,000 for activities, and I'll, can you explain that?
Certainly. Again, that is just kind of a rough number, because this was rolled into the HR budget this year and will continue moving forward. But those dollars are actually derived through the process by which employees purchase items out of the vending machines and those types of things. There's that vending piece that goes into play with regards to those dollars that are in there.
Okay.
So it's not really money that the city has set aside, it's money that they earn, and it's put into the budget as that.
I just needed that explanation, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That seems to be all, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Flannery or Mr. Aker, back to you.
Excellent, we'll hear from Ms. Brittany Morris Saunders on the economic development budget.
Good evening.
Hello again.
Is this your test to see if we'll tell you no?
It is not. Good evening, Brittany Morris Saunders, Director of Economic Development. I will present some information tonight on our budget for 2012, 2013. Our department structure, we are a equally small department. We have the director, myself, and then we have three economic development specialists specializing in individual silos, for lack of a better word. Economic Development Specialist in Retail is Julie Jacoby. She is our newest employee, just recently hired, and she specializes in the attraction and retention of retail. Economic Development Specialist specializing in business retention is Michelle Hill. She has been with the city for a little bit over four years now, and just transitioned from retail to retention. Lisa Wayne has been with the city also, about four years, and she is our Economic Development Specialist specializing in industrial attraction, and are essentially our Director of Research. Our mission, the Commerce City Economic Development Division commits to assisting our business and development community in every possible way. Create quality jobs for our residents, diversify Commerce City's economic base, establish a sustainable community, pursue development and redevelopment opportunities, and support businesses of all sizes. As you know, we have nearly 1,300 businesses in Commerce City, and a majority of those only have 10 employees or less. Our accomplishments in 2010, 2010 and 11, incentive program, we just went through that, but nearly 800 applications received to date, 24 business incentive packages approved by city council, more than $2.8 million awarded, that incentivized $61.4 million in capital investments, and 565 new jobs. We did launch the Commerce Connection, the ED newsletter, that does come out on the 15th of the month. That is an electronic newsletter, so please, if you are not already signed up, please write me, and we will get you into our system. We also launched the ED Twitter page, and we just received over 300 followers this weekend, so please follow us as well at www dot twitter dot com slash CommerceCityED for minute-to-minute economic development activities. King Supers Marketplace, the big news of the year, we will be celebrating that groundbreaking next Tuesday at 9:00, and Michelle Halsted will provide more information about that. Business Appreciation Event, that was held last year, we created three new award categories. This year's event is in a couple of weeks, September 9th, in this room. Everyone is invited, and I hope you are able to attend that, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. We are having a Business Resource Fair this year as part of the Business Appreciation Event, in addition to giving out the four awards. Atlanta Regional Commission Presentation, City Manager Flannery and myself flew down to Atlanta at the Atlanta Regional Commission's request to speak about our incentive program. This is one of many national groups and national publications that have written about our incentive program. We competed and are competing for the Gaylord Entertainment Hotel Complex. This is a billion-dollar combined deal with the National Western Stock Show. Second Business and Development Summit was hosted in this room. We had over 100 businesses attend that summit. This is the second, and we will be hosting the third next January. Successful ICSC trip, Councilmember Macal Downey and Mayor Pro Tem Snyder joined us on this year's trip, which was very exciting, and we received a number of prospects from that trip. Economic Development Citizen and Business Advisory Committees, the first Business Advisory Committee was held earlier this month. The first Citizen Advisory Committee will be held on Wednesday. Economic Development Strategic Plan was unanimously passed by city council in April of 2010. It had four overarching goals, implement a targeted marketing and business development campaign, expand support to existing industries and entrepreneurs, help put appropriate real estate options and infrastructure in place, and ensure workforce training and skills meets, meet employers' needs. I have basically grouped all four of those priorities and fit them within your council priorities, and you can see here, we have one that fits within every single one of your priorities that you identified. And I'll just rush through this, but feel free to ask any questions at the end of my presentation. The Economic Development Division Budget, our total budget is $510,703. What does this go towards? Salaries and benefits, materials and operating supplies, business recruitment trips. Business recruitment trips is actually everything outside of ICSC. ICSC fits under the meetings and conferences, which is later down the list, promotional activities and materials, business networking and development, memberships and dues, training, and publications. One proposed budget enhancement that we have proposed in this year's budget is CoStar. CoStar allows us to look up available properties for site selectors, prospects, brokers, retailers, and developers. We get a number of inquiries per week, and this will allow us to look into our system, figure out what we have available, and provide not only the information about the property, but it's really that market analytics that comes with CoStar that can truly be of benefit. When we were in dialogue with Gaylord Entertainment, they asked for a number of market analytics, and this actually came to our aid when we were putting together that prospect submittal. Unfortunately, we decided to get rid of CoStar, because we thought another program could assist us in a better way, and that did not turn out to be the case. So we would like $4,200 to reinstall CoStar in order to help us in this attraction effort. And with that, I will answer any questions you have about the budget. Oh, I'm sorry, one quick thing, even with the CoStar, I do want to mention that we will be saving $7,801.29 less than 2011. Thank you.
Comments from council? Mr. Marino.
Thanks, Brittany. What program were we using before CoStar?
Well, we had a, well, we will have a combination of Exeligent and CoStar. The benefits to having Exeligent is that Exeligent provides us the ability to have available property database on our website. That is something, CoStar's information is so sacred that they won't let us have that on our website for anyone who goes on and needs to do a property search. We know that 50% of site selection takes place online, even before they pick up the phone to call Commerce City Economic Development, so we do need actually both functions.
And these are a listing of commercial properties, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Commercial, industrial, office.
Okay.
All of the above.
Ms. Carson.
Thank you for the presentation, Brittany. Can you tell me where the $7,000 savings is coming from?
Sure. Well, we worked with the city manager's office to identify ways that we can save money, and it typically comes out of business networking and development, and being able to use our resources effectively.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz.
Thank you for your presentation, Brittany. Big fan of your work. Quick question for you, the Business Advisory Committee and the Citizens Advisory Committee, you said the Business Advisory has already met once, Citizens Advisory will meet for the first time this week. How many members are in each committee?
We, I believe, and I'll get you the exact numbers, I think it's close, it's definitely above 20 for the Business Advisory Committee, and then closer to 13, 14 for the Citizen Advisory Committee, but I will get you that exact number.
Okay, yeah, and I was just curious, and are there industries pretty diversified?
Absolutely. We made sure that we had representation from each of our five target industries on the Business Advisory Committee, as well as participation from Commerce City Business and Professionals Association, the Metro North Chamber, Adams County Economic Development, and the Minority Business Association.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marino.
You mentioned that the proposed software will help in site selection. Will that help for both prospective businesses that are looking at Commerce City, but also maybe existing businesses that are thinking about expanding or moving?
Absolutely. We do assist our existing businesses when they need it. Oftentimes, they don't hire a broker to look up properties, and Lisa Wayne in my office does assist them with the CoStar tool.
Great. Well, there's a lot of love for economic development among the council. You know, according to, you know, the goals that your priorities fit under, they're all number one, two, or three, because economic, it all comes back to economic development, I think, for us, so just appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate my staff, who does a great job. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Aker.
Michelle Halsted is going to present the Communication Budget Overview.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Michelle Halsted, Communications Director for the city. So I'm really excited to be here tonight to present my first budget to you. The Communications Division serves the entire city and all of its divisions and departments, and you can see by this slide, this is just a smattering of the things that we've done, especially in the last six months. Our team is nearly fully staffed. We have one vacancy, which is the Public Relations and Marketing Specialist, but one of the things that we did in the first six months of me being here was really work with the Information Technology and Parks and Recreation Department to consolidate the existing communications staff within a single division, so we could help achieve our strategic goals. So the Marketing Coordinator came over from Parks and Recreation, and the Website Development Coordinator came over from IT. The audit that was done in 2010 also identified specialized areas to consider for doing contracting versus bringing on additional full-time staff. And the city has an ongoing contract for part-time graphic design services, which is an area of expertise that our staff currently does not possess. So we're saving money and not having to do salaries and benefits for this specialized So six months ago, I presented the findings of the 2010 Strategic Communication Audit. And just for reference, and for some new folks on council, that was a qualitative document that really identified perspectives on and the effectiveness of the city's communication program. Not only our organizational structure, our goals, objectives, policies, and tools, but also how we communicated with our stakeholders, as well as how we developed messages and what messages were out there. The audit had several key findings, and some of which weren't very surprising to you. It identified the need for clear and consistent communication processes. It noticed an internal disconnect with employees that Heather Spencer talked about with vision and mission. It talked about tremendous opportunity to communicate the growth in leadership that exists within the city, and there was a tremendous perception that our city communication efforts were proactive rather than proactive. The audit's three key recommendations, we translated to these three strategic goals in front of you, and that's what I presented in February. So these are the three goals that the Communications Division has been working on, and the audit really did provide a great groundwork for implementing not only your established priorities, but creating a foundation for a comprehensive communication plan moving forward. Achieving these goals consistent with your annual objectives has been our mission the last six months, and we've done a lot of work to support these priorities behind the scenes. As I talked about in February, there's a hierarchy to successful communication, and that really starts with getting the division in order, and so that's why one of the first things we did was bring everybody together, so we could have a consistent and coordinated voice. Next, we started on many of the items within the pyramid that you see, and we've had successes in establishing department policies, internal coordination, building third-party partnerships, and even our external communication. And my goal is that within 2012, all of the elements on the pyramid will be in full swing, and so that will ensure successful city communication at all levels. In short, as I've said before, communications is a manageable function, and when done strategically, we can do great things. And some of that was evidenced, like I said, over the last couple of months. We also talked about in February, the first six-month priorities, and you can see check marks by these, because I think we are well on our way to achieving, or at least not completing these. And these priorities, and not only the audit, but the 2011 citizen survey, has really guided the budget process for this year. Not only did we verify retreat, we're doing the right things from a communication standpoint. standpoint, but we really completed the 2011 citizen survey, and that gave us clear measurable areas for improvement. We learned during that survey that 1 in 3 residents are somewhat dissatisfied with city communications, and 1 in 10 were very dissatisfied. We learned that the most common reason for this dissatisfaction was a lack of awareness. Either they didn't know that we were putting out information, or they didn't like what they were getting, they felt that it wasn't worthwhile or useful. We also found that people in our residences specifically got information, 2/3 of them got information by word of mouth, so very grassroots level, and over half got information from our city news, as well as stories that were placed on Denver television or local papers like the YourHub. And despite living in a digital environment and this lack of paper that we all want to get rid of, more than 35% by far want information mailed to them. People want to touch the things that we provide. So when we look at the budget for 2012, a lot of our requests and specifically enhancements reflect not only what we heard in the citizen survey, but the strategic communications As Mr. Tinklinberg pointed out, our proposed budget for 2012 is $799,316, and the major variances that you see are as follows. There's a $20,323 increase in salary of benefits. Again, this is the transfer of the two positions. We're now fully staffed with one vacancy. We've seen an increase of $102,000 in our services and charges. A lot of what we do is either staff time, or we're doing production of items. The big variances that you see, there's about a $45,000 total IT computer allocation, because we're fully staffed and we've taken over Channel 8. We now have more networks and more documents and portals. That was about $18,000 in 2011. The three that I've starred are the enhancement requests specifically that we're seeking. We currently have a graphic design contract that covers our daily needs, but there are many specialized projects that we do. Not only the Parks and Recreation Guide, the Police Department's annual report, the city's new annual report, and these require additional time from a graphics perspective, and that just wasn't budgeted. So we're asking for an additional $1,000 a month, and that will allow us to cover all of the city's graphic design needs for 2012. Secondly, we're asking for department-specific publications in the amount of $36,400. Again, one of the things that we heard in the citizen surveys, people like to touch things and have things mailed to them. Creating a specific budget for department-specific publications, specifically printing and/or mailing, would cover items such as expanding the redefining Commerce for Economic Development through postcards or additional materials for ICSC, or other materials that the back and the CAC determine are necessary to push economic development success. An additional, another piece that we'd like to provide as part of this funding is the senior newsletter. We recently redesigned the senior newsletter, and through the active database that Parks and Rec holds, we know there's 3,050 and plus individuals that don't receive that newsletter that could take advantage of our programs and services. This would be funding that would go directly to that type of department-specific publication. And there's also brochures and materials for the Police Department and Public Works that we'd like to do around the 104th improvements as we complete them, and should you decide to go to a fee perspective, that's a communication avenue we'd really want to make sure we promote and mail home. So those are things that this dollar amount would cover. Another thing we're asking for from an enhancement perspective is a new City Lights magazine, and this would be seed money in the amount of $5,125 to get that off the ground. What we've heard through the successful city news, as well as our Recreation Guide, is there is a sincere lack of locations for our local businesses to advertise in. And I've been fielding calls since I got here, asking to advertise business information or put that information into city news. The city manager and I have talked about that providing, creating a City Lights-like magazine, which would be biannual, so twice a year, would give us a chance to test how we do advertising with city publications, as well as create a revenue stream for the Communications Division by selling advertising and focusing the magazine on more economic development-centric messaging, so we could really promote the city to not only regional leaders, but to real estate agents and other types of ED, regional pieces throughout the state, throughout the region, throughout the city, throughout the state. So that piece would, again, give us a chance to test advertising, and that money is seed money to help us get at least one publication off the ground, and we're working on a business plan for that. Finally, the last item that resulted in that variance is actual cost increases and transfers of funds. This isn't a big deal, but letterhead for the city and business cards comes out of my budget. And while I don't control it, that cost has increased over the line item the last year, so there's a little bit more money for that. There's also some money that transferred over with the new position for website maintenance and software development. So those are some actual cost increases. And then we saw no variances in materials and supplies. So the three enhancements specifically really align with city council goals. As I said, our job is to effectively communicate and graphically reflect your goals and the vision of the city. To develop a vibrant and balanced economy, I see that our graphic design really enhancing and creating a brand, as well as creating those specific publications for things such as ICSC or other ED needs will really help us achieve that goal. Again, certainly providing services and amenities enhance the quality of life, while to effectively provide them, you also have to let people know where they're at and what they're doing. And these types of enhancements will allow us to do that. The new City Lights, as I mentioned, will allow us to craft some partnerships that benefit residents and businesses, not only providing information, but providing an avenue for our local businesses to advertise and reach some new markets. And finally, creating a community built upon a culture of leadership and excellence. Everything we strive to do in communications is to make sure that Commerce City is poised and positioned in the most positive light that we can, and these, again, enhancements reflect that. So in closing, this is the first time in three years that there's been a true usage in planning within communications. We are trying to be fiscally conservative, but we want to make sure that we're responsive to and addressing the results of the citizen survey, your established goals, and the findings of the audit. So thank you for your consideration, and I now open it up to any questions.
Really excited about your whole report, but especially about the advertising part. That's going to be such a welcome for us and for our businesses, because we're going to be able to guarantee that a copy will get in every single residence in our city. That's going to help with places like United Power and a lot of those others that have to put stuff out, which I think would help them save some costs also.
I may say, Mr. Mayor, I'm a little nervous about that one, but I'm willing to test it, so I appreciate your indulgence.
I think it's, I think it's going to be wonderful. Ms. Cheater?
Yes, you just said what I was thinking. I'm excited too about the opportunity for advertising to take place with our local businesses. I feel it's just going to generate some dollars and all, and I'm excited about that. You may be a little bit scared, but I'm not. Thank you and your staff for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thanks, Michelle, for your presentation. And I've got to say, I've really noticed a big difference in the communications that this city has made since you came on board. So I think that, I can only speak for myself, but I've been very pleased with the additional communication that we've been able to get out to people. You know, on the issue of accepting advertising, is there any other, that's competing with private enterprise. What else does the city do that competes with private enterprise in the city?
Gosh, I'm not sure, Mr. Benson.
Mr. Flannery?
I would defer to Mr. Flannery on that one.
Councilman Benson, there are certain things, such as possible snow plowing, you know, different types of public services that we do, that might actually, I mean, anything that you can privately contract potentially could be a competition.
Right. But that would be a recognized city service, you know?
Correct. But as Ms. Halsted mentioned, specifically on this specific topic, we thought we'd pilot it to see what exactly the interest would be, measure that interest, because a number of individuals have come asking for that service, and we thought, well, let's see what it measures out to be.
I'd just like for you to keep in mind that it is going to be competing with anybody else that's trying to accept advertising in a newspaper or other format, and we're going to be competing with private businesses, which I believe that our Director of Economic Development is trying to bring in here, those private businesses, and I want them to all be able to make a living too.
Sure, and we're only trying to meet the demand.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have looked at other of our neighboring municipalities. Some of them have actually had to go to advertising due to some budget cuts. So for example, in Thornton, their Recreation Guide is chock-full of advertising. I'm personally, and talking to the city manager, a little uncomfortable about that guide specifically going advertising, but again, this is a pilot program, and should we look at expanding that, that would be maybe a future budget conversation. But there are municipalities and my colleagues across the region that do do some type of advertising.
If I had a restaurant that I wanted to open in this city, boy, I'd go crazy and I'd advertise with you. Mr. Moreno?
Michelle, I greatly admire the developments that have taken place in your department over the past few months. You know, I've noticed that Commerce City's stories, specifically for the community, have shown up more often in YourHub, in the Sentinel, and also in the Brighton Blade, which now has a kind of northern Commerce City section, which is largely due to your work, and I thank you for that. But what I constantly still hear from residents is that it doesn't replace a paper that they get on their doorstep once a week. So I was just wondering if we are still looking at or pursuing any kind of partnerships with a newspaper that would maybe be interested in expanding into Commerce City?
There are, the Brighton Blade Publishing Group has certainly, like you said, augmented their publication, and the Commerce City Sentinel Express is publishing more pages than it used to, so it's more than just a legal listing. We've started to think about how we could entice the Great Eight newspapers, which covers Westminster Window and the Thornton Sentinel. They've had some management changes, so we're hoping that as we head into the new year, that'll be some additional conversations we can have, and see if there's a willingness or an interest for them to come into this market.
Great. I'm excited about some of the budget enhancements that you've proposed, particularly the City Lights magazine, as well as some of the department-specific publications through the one that you mentioned with Parks and Recreation and the senior newsletter. Parks and Rec, I believe, currently produces a senior newsletter. Would that amount, then, that we appropriate for that, would that be transferred into your budget?
Between 2007 and 2009, there were funds for each department. That went away in 10 and 11 for a variety of reasons, but some of that money for like the Parks and Recreation Guide and for senior newsletter and other associated marketing items do still reside in Parks and Rec. Some of these funds would go to augment that. So we, Director Carolyn Keith and I work pretty collaboratively together, and we try to stretch those marketing, communication dollars as much as we can.
Great. And then just one last question. In the interim, before you came, we were contracting out with a company for our communications. Does that partnership still exist, and does that amount come out of your communications budget?
We are currently contracting with that department, that department, that company for the graphic design services, which does come out of my budget. We're also contracting them to provide some part-time support with the current vacancies, so you haven't really seen a dip of service. When we fill that vacancy, that part of the contract will end, and we will only have them for graphic design. And I envision that in 2013, as we get more of our graphic design online and the look and feel, that contract itself will go significantly down.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bullock?
Thank you for your presentation. That was, I enjoyed that quite a bit, and I enjoy how you keep us updated on a lot of the things that if I don't have a chance to read the newspaper, I get to see on my phone what's happening around Commerce City, in Commerce City, and other places. Are we, do we still have the partnership with the Water Department and the School District for the publication we're doing? And is that other publication you're talking about with the advertisement, is that going to be that publication that grows out of that? Are we going to still combine with them?
So City News is our monthly newsletter, our monthly print newsletter, for lack of a better word, that we send out. It's about 16 to 20 pages. We do, Councilwoman Bullock, still partner with Adams 14 and the Water District, and since I've been here, we've been partnering with 27J as well. So you've seen that come online. That publication will continue, and our goal is to actually finalize agreements with all of those parties, so we have a guarantee that they are going to participate for future budget years. City Lights, or a new City Lights, would be in addition to and separate of, so it would be wholly our publication, and my goal is really to make it more of an economic development opportunity and messaging piece.
Okay, thank you, and, thank you. There was something else I was going to ask, but it escapes me now.
Okay, Ms. Carson?
Michelle, I want to tell you, you've been a great enhancement to our city, so thank you for everything that you do. We all know that you're a workhorse by the times that we get these emails, day or night and seven days a week, so thank you for everything that you do. You really have listened to council of wanting to increase our communication to citizens, and I think you've done a great job on that. You've also helped us highlight this city and be a visionary of what it is that we can show people that we have done and what we've accomplished, so thank you. And you also spoke of reaching out to our seniors, so thank you very much for being in tune to that and everything that you do.
Well, if I may, it truly is a credit to my staff, and they've taken on some significant responsibilities and have come along with me for the ride, so we're looking forward to just going even higher in 2012.
Mr. Bullock, you remembered?
Yes, I did. Who came over from Park and Recreation to your staff?
That was Raydon Olbert.
Okay. And who was the other employee that joined your staff?
Tanya Westby from IT.
Okay, and you still have one opening left?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Should have learned by now that when I say one more question, never is one more question. With the department-specific allocation that you're requesting, you know, obviously you highlighted Parks and Rec as one example. Could you maybe give us a little taste of the other things you're going to implement with other departments, perhaps like Public Works and those kind of areas?
So there's a host of brochures that haven't been updated in Public Works, for example. One example would be our quiet zones. You know, we're about to implement a new quiet zone on 96th and State Highway 2, so that would be one opportunity to update that piece and then help do the word out, get the word out through a coordinated campaign. Another thing would be the successful completion of the 104th Avenue project. Once we finalize that, we want to send a mailing to those voters and thank them for their support and show them what their money went towards. In Police Department, there's a host of brochures that we could help them with, and ranging from home tip safety to senior tips and safety that they do on a regular basis. Finance, Roger has assured me he doesn't want any help from a budget standpoint. I truly, I kid, but there's some opportunities to promote the tax and financial and some information that his auditors do. Human Resources, Heather talked a lot about those things that she's got on the docket to help enhance internal communication and certainly onboarding and an employee orientation packet, or even when they go out to get jobs and getting applicants in. We don't have a great board, so to speak, or a roadshow to encourage people to come to Commerce City. Some of this money could go to that. There's a whole host of things that we can do, it's just making sure we have the budget to do those.
Great. And just one suggestion, I found that the organizational chart that you presented in your presentation was really, really helpful in terms of understanding the exact structure of your department. Maybe in the future, though, also including the names of the employees, just so we can get a better understanding. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before I kick it over to Mr. Draker, I just wanted to add that I echo the council's comments and compliments of Michelle. This council, in my opinion, in the retreat and the several retreats we've had over the years... years, have stressed communication almost if not more in some cases than economic development. So that we saw is a very high priority for you and I think we're meeting a lot of those goals, as mentioned here tonight, but look forward to a lot more in the future.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Benson, did you have something?
Yes. Mr. Flannery, if we have stressed anything more than a grocery store over the past four years, I would like to know about it.
Well, we certainly have heard that, but communicating it is the other part.
Mr. Aker, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. Parks and Recreation and Golf will be the next presenter on their budget.
Okay. Do one of you want to say how nice it was to golf this weekend out there and how pretty everything looked before they get started? I thought maybe you would.
Carolyn, I would like to say this to you and the golf crew in the back, that absolutely we had a wonderful time golfing in the tournament on Friday and you did on Saturday. The course is in good shape, you have very good customer service there, and you guys do a fantastic job.
On behalf of Paul and the Buffalo Run Golf Staff, I will accept that. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, I'm here this evening to share with you the 2012 proposed budget for Parks, Recreation and Golf. The Parks, Recreation and Golf Department consists of 264-plus employees, 51 full-time employees, and 213-plus part-time seasonal employees. The plus comes with the idea that our part-time and seasonal numbers fluctuate throughout the year based on the programs and services we're providing. In our Administration Division, we have seven full-time staff. The Administrative Division provides support to Parks, Planning, Operations, Recreation and Golf, as well as the program registration for all of our recreation programs. We also have the Community Events Budget that lives within the Park and Recreation Department Budget as part of that administrative budget. The Parks, Planning and Operations Division has 14 full-time staff and 27-plus part-time or seasonal staff, depending on the time of the year. Mike Brown, who is with us this evening, is the Park Planning and Operations Division Within the Parks Division, we have 17 city-owned parks and 24 miles of developed trail. We have 639 acres of open space and one off-leash dog park. In the Recreation Division, we have 21 full-time staff and 118-plus part-time or seasonal staff, providing programs in aquatics, youth and adult sports, gymnastics, dance, fitness, wellness, the Recreation Center, the Contra Community Center, Community Services, which is our wellness, seniors, older adults, our youth and teen programs, Pioneer Park, and also our custodial for our Recreation Center and Contra Community Center staff live in the Recreation Division. In Recreation, we offer 1,000-plus programs. In 2010, we had over 9,700 program registrations. We provide programming throughout the city in cooperation with our partners such as the Belle Creek Metro District, the Reunion Metro District, 27J, Adams School District 14, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, and Dick's Sporting Goods Park. The Commerce City Recreation Center is open seven days a week, approximately 95 hours a week, and in 2010, we had over 119,000 annual drop-in visits. That doesn't include the folks that are there for meetings or the folks that register for our programs. Those are just our drop-in users for use of the gym, the fitness and wellness equipment and the pool. We also logged over 7,000 volunteer hours in 2010 to help with park events, special events, youth and senior programs. Karen O'Donnell is here this evening and she is the Recreation Division Manager. As most of you know, golf operates as an enterprise fund. The Golf Department consists of nine full-time people and 67-plus part-time and seasonal. Those employees provide for golf maintenance, golf operations, and the golf restaurant. In 2010, Buffalo Run was host to over 35,000 rounds and multiple tournaments, events, and rentals. We also in 2010, as you know, took over the operation and maintenance of the Buffalo As Parks and Recreation relates to the council priorities, again, as you know, council adopted 16 priorities last March 2011 with the strategic framework of developing a balanced and vibrant city economy, effectively providing services and amenities that enhance quality of life and position the city for continued growth, crafting sustainable partnerships that benefit residents and businesses alike, and creating a community built upon a culture of leadership and excellence. We believe in Parks and Recreation that we, the programs and services we provide, directly impact nine of the 16 priorities and indirectly impact seven of those priorities. We believe that the Park and Recreation programs and services that we provide positively impact and cultivate economic development. We also believe that we have an impact on the infrastructure improvements to increase mobility, as is evident in our current development of our Bike and Ped Master Plan, which the third priority identified by council was to improve transit bicycle and pedestrian facilities. We also have the ability to impact expanding recreational offerings and trail park networks to improve our quality of life, and I'll be talking about some of those opportunities in our CIP projects later in my presentation this evening. We also participate cooperatively with other departments in identifying additional amenities desired by our residents and looking at those funding sources as presented to you in the Long Range Financial Plan. We obviously, in all of the programs and services that we provide, promote activities that enhance public health, wellness, and quality of life. We work not only to develop strong partnerships within the community, but within the city itself. The chief spoke last week of partnerships that we have with the Police Department in our police camp. We have our teens around town, the events in the parks that we have in the summer that we work cooperatively with the Police Department. We work to maximize our efficiencies and effectiveness with Public Works, with communications, as Michelle described this evening, and we're always looking at how we can improve our processes with the Finance Department. We do work diligently in creating a communications program that builds pride, connectivity, and engagement. As you could see in a number of the programs that Michelle presented this evening, those revolve around Park and Recreation programs and services. We also have the opportunity through the events that we provide to give that opportunity to create connectivity with our residents, our businesses, and the various organizations and departments within our organization. We also believe that the programs and services that we provide fall right in line with the chief and the Police Department in the idea of prolonging or prolonged declining crime When you look at our 2012 proposed Park and Recreation Golf Budget, in general, our budget that we propose maintains all of our existing levels of service. It's also important, and council had identified in the Long Range Financial Planning, that it was important to you to take care of our existing parks, trails, recreation and golf assets, and you will see that in the budget we present this evening. We also have the opportunity through the budget that's being presented to enhance our senior and adult programs and services, as well as our youth and teen programs and services. And again, all of the programs that we provide in Parks, Recreation and Golf promote active living, healthy lifestyles, and create the opportunity for community connectivity and uphold the vision of the city quality community for a lifetime. In general, the budget that Roger presented, this is a slide from his presentation last week, as you can see when you look at the, this is just the Park and Recreation Budget within the General Fund. The 2012 proposed Park and Recreation Budget increased 23,669, less than 1%, far less than 1%, and that includes administration, park maintenance, recreation, and community We had no major variances within the Administration Division. Our capital outlay budget, the equipment replacement for the Recreation Center, was based on our equipment replacement needs and/or purchases that we've proposed for 2012. You will see when you get your budget, there was a reduction in that line item over 2011. However, we're confident that we do have the equipment replacement necessary and the equipment purchases for 2012 identified in that budget. In our Community Events Budget, there were no major variances or changes. Within the Recreation Division Budget, again, there were no major variances. Within our Parks Division, you see a minimal decrease, and in part, that is due to the recent 2011 amended budget through the reappropriation with the one-time contribution of $45,000 to help us with the replacement of the hail-damaged plants and trees on 104th. So the major changes in the Parks Division Budget, we have adjusted our seasonal salary line item to reflect what we have spent in the past, which is an increase. We have also reduced the utilities line item or adjusted that based on what we have paid. So you see those two line items more or less cancel each other out, which is why you see a very, overall reduction in the Parks Division Budget. We also had an increase in our vehicle allocation, which was due simply to the replacement of three trailers and a truck in our inventory. With the Buffalo Run Golf Budget, we've proposed a budget that we believe provides us the opportunity to maintain the course in the condition that everyone can be proud of. As Kathy mentioned this evening, Buffalo Run is a facility that is well-known in the metro area. The city has made an investment in maintaining and taking care of those assets, and the budget we're presenting this evening allows for us to continue in that same fashion. As you can see, our total revenue for 2012, we do have a reduction in our golf operation budget that more accurately reflects our green fees and other fees in rounds of golf at Buffalo Run. We are seeing an increase in our revenues at the restaurant, as reflected on our experience thus far this year and in 2010. So you do see a minimal decrease in our proposed revenues for 2012 for Buffalo Run, but you see similarly a decrease in our expenditures. When you look at the golf expenses, 2012 over 2011, you see a little over $123,000 reduction in golf expenses. Some of those, again, are due to those one-time reappropriation items that are reflected here in the amended 2011 budget. So this evening, we are here to present to you a balanced golf budget, revenues and expenditures. I also wanted to share with you, in presenting that balanced budget, just a little bit of information that was provided for us this evening regarding the national trends. And nationwide, these numbers are provided through the National Golf Foundation. In general, across the country, since 2008, you're seeing a reduction of just under 18% in rounds of golf across the country. When we look at Buffalo Run compared to other Denver metro area courses, we're really doing fairly well. We've maintained and we are leveling off with our rounds of golf, and we believe that we're positioning ourselves well with our programs and services, including the Bison Grill, to be prepared when folks are ready to spend that discretionary income at the golf course again, that we'll be positioned well to continue to hopefully see our revenues increase back to what they were in prior years. But as you can see, compared to some of the Denver courses and the Aurora courses in the metro area and some of our neighboring courses, Buffalo Run has seen a smaller decrease in rounds than other courses in the metro area. The final part of my presentation this evening relates to our capital improvement projects. This is really where we have the opportunity to enhance our programs and services that I referred to earlier and/or continue to make that effort to take care of what we have and look at some additional trail development as it relates to the desires of our citizens that were identified in the Recreation Strategic Plan. Our capital improvement projects proposed for the 2012 year include the 104th Avenue Multi-Use Path, which is a 12-foot wide path on the north side of 104th from Lima Street to the O'Brien Canal. Our Fairfax Improvements, this is a continuation of our 2011 project. We currently have funding for the irrigation replacement, as well as the maintenance building. The second part of this and the other, last Monday, you all accepted or adopted the resolution for a GOCO grant that will help us with this particular project. Hopefully, we'll be successful with our grant that will allow for us to renovate Fairfax Park and include a perimeter trail, renovation of the court areas, the shelter areas, some of the landscaping. We continue to work on that so that eventually what you will see when you visit Fairfax Park is a complete renovation of one of our oldest parks in the city. We also have our general park improvements for $50,000. This is a line item that you, if you will recall, have seen in prior budget presentations, prior years, and will continue to see. This is a line item in which we continue to chip away at projects that are identified in the Recreation Strategic Plan, and quite honestly, we will always have capital repair and replacement in all of our parks. This not only identifies some of those needs in the Recreation Strategic Plan, but it also provides for us to begin to address some of the ADA newly adopted requirements. Our Sand Creek Trail, budgeted at $85,000, covers a quarter mile of the Sand Creek Trail that's a soft-surface trail. It's the Fletcher property between the O'Brien and the South Platte. It's the last quarter mile of our part of the Sand Creek Trail that is soft-surface that will become a hard-surface trail. We also have $30,000 budgeted for our tree replacement. That would cover about 60 trees. We've currently identified over 300 trees throughout the city, which does not include our 104th trees and landscaping that we lost due to the recent hailstorm, or some of the lost trees here on Quebec in the tree lawns. We've identified other funding sources that hopefully we can chip away at those particular projects. Our golf equipment replacement of $25,000 would replace a lightweight utility cart and a heavyweight utility cart. The golf irrigation upgrade at $26,000 is simply a change in the FCC regulations that we are required to comply with and will need to upgrade our existing broadband communication system in order for our irrigation system to be operable at Buffalo Run. And our final project, which is the Recreation Center enhancements, which I will tell you that I and I know a lot of our staff are really excited about. This is the project that will enable us to provide for those enhancements for our youth and teens, as well as our senior and older adults. And I'd like to take just a moment to elaborate on what this project involves. There are three components of the Recreation Center enhancement. One is the senior and older adult enhancements, which is really a result of the senior focus groups and input over the last year. groups and input over the last year and a half. We have a senior committee that has been looking at what and how we enhance the senior lobby, make it more inviting, more usable, more friendly for folks. This project will address those issues. It also provides for enhancing our teen annex area. We will expand the area to include additional programming related to technology, whether it's Wii or the Extreme, it's interactive. It can also be used, it's an intergenerational opportunity. It's not just our youth and teens that enjoy those types of programs and activities, it's for folks of all ages. So we're anticipating that even our seniors and older adults may make use of this. This project also provides for us to better utilize some space and place our staff in the appropriate areas where they will be more reachable by our constituents. The office space in the senior area will be designated for staff that serve our seniors and older adults, and then we will be creating some additional office space in the teen annex expansion that allows for us to have all of our youth and teen staff in that general vicinity, so they're more accessible to our youth and teens. And the third component of it is what we're calling an infrastructure enhancement, which is carpet replacement throughout the building, which as, if you may recall, I mentioned, we have over 119,000 drop-in visits alone at the Recreation Center. So a lot of high traffic. So we're looking to replace the carpet as part of this project. And we're also looking to replace our security camera system, which is the original system. And part of what will, this will enable us is to tie directly into the police department. It's a web-based program that can be accessed by staff and PD that are given access to that. It also has a better resolution. On the occasions that we do need to look to our security camera for information, the resolution isn't, is quite poor and it makes it very difficult to identify individuals. We also have a limited storage at this point where we can only store information for three days. With a new system, it would be unlimited. And as I mentioned, we'd also have better access. So we're really excited about the opportunity to make some significant enhancements. If you aren't aware, 2012 will be the 25th anniversary of the Commerce City Recreation Center. So this is timely in making some improvements that not only enhance our programs and services, but continue to take care of a facility that has long been a community gathering place for Commerce City. We are looking to fund this project through our Adams County Open Space Pass Through Dollars, our lottery pass-through dollars, the cigarette tax funds, and grants of $325,580. And I mention the grants because this past Saturday, we had our site visit from the Adams County Open Space Board, which seemed to go very well. We had the opportunity to take them through the Recreation Center and show them all of these potential enhancements. We do have our grant presentation this Thursday, and we'll know here by October what and how we fared in that whole process. So with that, I would entertain any questions that you may have about the parks, recreation, golf operating budgets, or our capital improvement projects?
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. A couple things, I also want to thank the people who play the lottery and who smoke cigarettes for this, so. And I mean that in a positive way, actually. I am really excited about the drop in only 11.8% of the players that play the rounds of golf compared to 18% nationally. That's very impressive with your golf course there. And I wanted to say thank you on how you operate and your staff members, the senior center. And I know personally dozens of people who work out at the Rec Center and swim at the pool just because of the way, the cleanliness and the way it's operated and the friendliness of staff members there. Thank you for all you do. One question, though. The Goto property that was purchased, do you have any plans on what you're going to be doing with that?
It's actually an extension of what is now Veterans Memorial Park. All of the property, the long-term goal would be to acquire all of those properties and simply expand the park space. But as you drive by that, you see that it's simply irrigated bluegrass.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for your presentation. First of all, I want to say, I don't play golf very much, but I get out there and I do play golf at other places, too. And every time I play with somebody at Buffalo Run, they say, "This course is just in great shape." I had the opportunity to play in a tournament out at Riverdale back in late May, I believe. Our course beats Riverdale all over the place. It's just, it's kept in very good shape, and I enjoy playing out there. And I'm looking at the various numbers here, and I'm seeing that $1 million is being spent on Fairfax Park improvements and Rec Center enhancements. You know, as you and I have discussed, we've got parks in the northern part of town that haven't even been developed yet. They don't need to just be improved, they just need to be started. They don't need to be enhanced, they just need to have some grass put in there. What do we need to do? Because I, we're spending $71,000 in the north area as opposed to a million for Fairfax Park and the Rec Center. What am I supposed to do to represent my clients, to try to get the money, some money spent up there to develop the parks that are set aside and they have a sign out there that says "Future Park"? And my people keep asking, "When are we going to get, when are we going to get this park that we've been promised"? What can the council do?
Well, I'd make one comment. Certainly, I can't answer what the council can do. But if you may recall, during the Long Range Financial Plan retreat, council identified and acknowledged that Adams County Open Space and Lottery Pass Through Dollars would be used, continue to be used to take care of facilities and parks and trails that we currently have. So often, our capital repair and replacement also helps reduce some of our operation and maintenance costs. With Fairfax Park, and for instance, it's the oldest irrigation system we have, we spend numerous hours on repair of the irrigation system. So I believe that our taking care of what we have, we are addressing as part of one of council's priorities as it related to the Adams County Open Space and Lottery Pass Through. Again, one of the greatest challenges with new development is not just the capital dollars, it becomes the additional operation and maintenance for any one of those facilities, whether it's parks, trails, new recreation amenities, any of those. So it simply becomes a matter of what are those priorities for new development? And as you may also recall, with our Recreation Strategic Plan, one of the number-one items identified by residents was trail connectivity. And we've continued to work at developing those trails in the north to at least address one issue. It certainly isn't building new parks, I understand that.
And I think this is about the first time that I've seen the numbers broken down in this way, where you can actually focus on what's being spent. But we're spending 15 times as much in the south area for improvements and enhancements before we even have a park developed in the north area. That's my only point, 15 times the dollars.
I would also-
Those dollars that all of us are putting in in the form of taxes. The whole city is contributing to those dollars. 15 times as much in the south as in the north.
I would also-
It's up to the council to do something about that. It's not up to you, I understand that.
I would share with you that we've also used our Adams County Open Space Dollars and Lottery Pass Through for capital repair and replacement in those parks that are developed in the north, like River Run and Stampede Parks.
It's still just a great disparity between the parks where I live and the parks down here, 15 times disparity.
Mr. Moreno?
Well, my response to Councilman Benson would be, how often do the parks in the northern range flood to the point where they're unusable? The parks in the southern core of the city operate also as retention and detention. And I think it's unfair to say that we don't spend as much on parks in the northern range when there are significant improvements that need to occur to the parks in the southern core. I'm of the opinion that a money spent on a park in Commerce City is money spent on a park in Commerce City. With that said, I do have a few questions about your presentation, Carolyn. Particularly in terms of Fairfax, with the irrigation replacement, will that mean that less flooding occurs at Fairfax as a result of those improvements that are going to be made?
The irrigation has no impact on the retention-detention. Unless somehow the city changes the use of Fairfax for retention-detention, and probably Darren Sterling or someone from Public Works could better address that. But at this point, that is the main use, and the irrigation has no impact on that. It's simply a matter of when it rains, it serves its purpose.
Okay, thank you. And the, I recall a brief mention of perhaps some of the baseball diamonds being converted to open space, is that still part of the proposal?
At Fairfax?
Yes.
No. At one point, we were looking at the field that is in the lowest lying area there north. But at this point, with our limited field inventory, we're not looking at that. We certainly don't rely on that as a game field because of the volatility with the weather, but for practice and drop-in use, it's, works fine.
Great. It appears that of the capital improvement projects that you've listed, none of the money is coming out of general fund in order to get funding, is that correct? Or is this just a display of the grants that will be utilized?
No, at this point, no, other than the cigarette tax. It depends on some future council decision.
And the timeline on the Recreation Center enhancements, when will those occur?
It really is dependent upon our success with our grant applications. We would certainly look to complete those no later than our annual shutdown, which is in August. So we would then celebrate our 25th anniversary later in the fall. So it really depends on our success with those grants. Once we know that, we can give a better timeline.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Commenting on what Mr. Benson said and piggybacking on what Mr. Moreno said, parks in the city are parks in the city. There isn't 15 times as much money being spent one place as another. Money is being spent in Commerce City. And if you want to do it apples, apples, oranges to oranges, when you say that, we would have to look at how much money is being spent on the Rec Center up north in order to keep it enhanced. And that's where one of the thing, where it comes in, because there's no Rec Center up north to be enhanced that's almost 25 years old, if you didn't do this or spend this money, maybe in two or three years, you'd be spending, instead of $595, $850, you'd be spending a million dollars to enhance a Rec Center. All of us know that 25 years ago, that we were in a lot better shape than we are right now, and it didn't cost us as much in time, energy, exercise, or medicine to do what we do now. So 25 years, that's a nice sum for an enhancement for something we're going to celebrate 25 years of use. And after you see just the use from this year, multiply that times 25 and see the number of visits we've had going through the Commerce City Rec Center. I was going to ask a question, but I decided to comment on that instead.
Ms. Carson?
Carolyn, thank you for your presentation. And, you know, I'm a believer that you're the department in our city that our residents really enjoy, that you're the one that gives them everything that they really want. And not to start a war up here, but setting up here as a representative of the north, it was very apparent to me also, as it was to Mr. Benson, that we're not doing enough up north. That's not your fault if you don't have the dollars to do it. But $20,000 for 104th, and then $385,000 for Fairfax, $85,000 for Sand Creek, and $595,000 for the Rec Center. And you could argue and say that a city, a park is for the whole city, a rec center is for a whole city. But I've asked the question many, many times about the use of that rec center. The citizens that I speak to on a daily basis tell me they do not use that rec center. When I inquire about that, I've been told that not to anyone's knowledge are our north seniors coming down and using that rec center. I've asked many parents how many of their youth and teens are using that rec center, and I am told none. I am also told that we have a large amount of out-of-city residents using that. So we probably have more Denver people using our rec center than our people from the north using our own rec center. I'm not here to cause a war, I'm just saying, the disparity, it's just really right here, and we need to step up to the plate. I did receive some phone calls after the mayor's article in the paper. Everyone just loved the article, thought that the city was portrayed in a wonderful thing. The next thing that was said to me is, geez, how come we don't have a water park like that for our children? I don't think anybody up north even knew that that water park existed at Pioneer Park. And I don't think anybody in the north wants to take anything away from anybody in the south, but they would also like to have some attention paid to them. And so I think this council needs to figure out a way that we get some facilities up in the north area, because for one thing, housing developments depend on it, but children depend on it. And if we're really going to give this healthy lifestyle and really do things, these children need to have water parks, they need to have recreational facilities, our seniors need to have places that they will go that they don't feel that it's too far for them to drive. And it's, Carolyn, I'm not blaming you or your department, I am saying that we as a city need to take a good look at this, because this dollar amount here, as Mr. Benson points out, is huge.
I'm going to put my two cents in also. And I live in the north. We've got the stuff in the south because that's where the stuff is, and we've got to keep it working. And if it means we have to spend more money to keep stuff working in the south than we have money to build in the north, I don't want to get to where North Glen is now, where the fire department's got to come in, and they're saying, "You fix it or you condemn it." We've got to take care of what we have. I hate this part, and I am so afraid of what's coming, because as I sit and look at this council, we have two representatives here to fight for the south. I'm afraid of what might happen next if this council decides we're going to start paying dollar for dollar. That can't be where we go. If you look at the other cities that are in this metropolitan area, I don't know of anybody that has two parks and rec buildings. Yes, they've closed maybe one and built a new one, but I'm just not familiar with any cities, and there could be, but I'm not familiar with any cities that have two parks and rec. And you know what? That parks and rec building's going to be somewhere. Right now, it happens to be down on 60th. That's the one we have. If the problem is we need to get more word out to get people from the north to go down there and use it, then fine. As far as no one using it, I hate it when people say "no one" or "everyone." I know the guy that sits next to me takes his scouts from the north down there every week. So there are some people using that facility. I have no idea what the number is, but you're telling me there's 10,000 people in there a month. That's a heck of a lot of people using something that no one's using. We have got to get to the point where we are a city. We cannot do this, I'm not getting my dollar. That's what's happening in the country now. It's the old, "What are you doing for me"? No, it's got to be, "What are you doing for us"? We have got to get- We have got to get more city-oriented. This is making me very disappointed, and I'm going to get beat up now for my statements, but I think it needs to be said. We are one city, and that's what we've got to look at. And if you need a half a million dollars to get that building up to where it needs to be, then that's what this council needs to give you. And if we need to start some fund to look at a new site in the North, then fine, start a fund when the economy gets better. But I am not willing to take money away from fixing this stuff in the South, and I've been dealing with Fairfax Park since before I was on council. It's stuff we have to do, and we've got to get it done. And I'm very sorry that some people in the North feel they're being neglected. When that store opens, they're not going to feel neglected anymore. Mr. Benson?
I don't think my comments were directed towards building a rec center up North. That may come at some later time. It's probably going to take a bond issue that has to be approved by the people, but that's not what I'm talking about. I'm saying that if we have $500,000 or a million dollars to spend, that we need to get some parks built in the North that are set aside for parks and not just have them be three-foot-high weeds except for the first 20 feet from the road, because that's what we've got up there, at least between Second Creek Elementary and Stewart Middle School and over on Chambers Road, just south of where Mr. Acre lives, between Buffalo Run East and the Greens. I'm not talking about $25 million for a rec center right now. I hope that's going to be someplace in the future. I'm just talking about $500,000 or a million just to develop some grass in a park as opposed to having it just be all weeds when these people have been sitting there for seven or eight years looking at a park, quote, "park," that's nothing but a weed patch. That's all I'm talking about. We've got half a million or a million dollars, let's try to have some parity as to how it's spent.
Mr. Bullock?
I know you remembered, and I know you're going to have to agree with me. Do you want me to have Mr. Moreno talk, and then I'll come back to you?
Yes.
Mr. Moreno.
Well, it wasn't too long ago that there was a controversy on council about park impact fees collected in the North being spent on a park in the South for Pioneer Park. To my recollection, that loan has been repaid. And I personally would like to hear from staff about how we plan to use that park impact loan that was repaid. I'm sure that in the list of capital improvements included for that loan is the development of those park sites that are labeled "future park." I would think that would make sense, but I don't know. So I'd like to pose that question to staff. And it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but in the future, if we can look at how that park impact money that was collected in the Northern Range is going to spend, that's something I would be interested in.
Absolutely. And currently, a park impact fee has been used for trail development, but the loan that you're referring to and the current balance has not been allocated and would at a future date. Council would have that opportunity.
Thank you. Okay.
I would like for the council to do a little homework. Check and see how many of the youth up North are on different teams that are sponsored by the rec center. How many of the kids from up North were in the police camp? How many of the kids from up North were at the gymnastics meet that won all the medals? And then come back and talk to me about parity. It's, I guess that all you see are open spaces and parks that you don't have, the pocket parks that a lot of the HOAs promised. Some of those are the parks that you don't have. They aren't the city. I mean, this is a city, not a North and a South. And me and Mr. Benson go around and around about this all the time, that if you wanted this instantaneously, why didn't you move to Stapleton? The house would have cost you a little bit more, but you would have had your parks, you would have had your stores, and you would have had everything you want. You built in an undeveloped place that is developing as we go along. If you wanted to pay $500,000 for your house and have instant parks up North, that could have been accomplished too. But you're paying as you go, and if you want to pay more for parks, taxes, and recreation, then it can be done. You can have a park in some of these spots that you're talking about right now, but it's going to cost you. And the reason why a lot of things that you see on this list are being spent down South because they were here down South before you ever moved up North and before up North was ever up North. The rec center is 25 years old. There isn't a development up North that is even half that age. So when you put these things in consideration, think about how it develops. And if you want to look at different developments around the metro area, go look at Mission Viejo, go look at Highlands Ranch, and see how long it took them to get the same things you're talking about at a higher cost. And what's funny is me and Mr. Benson had this conversation last week, and I went and I checked in Highlands Ranch and Mission Viejo and different developments and up in Erie at some of the Mount Vista and everything like that. And a lot of those developments don't have it either. Go to Frederick's, go to any of the other places that are developing, and see how many parks and everything they have that are instantaneously there that they aren't paying for or are going to pay increased costs for. You need to do your homework before you do your complaining.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Well, I have done my homework. In fact, I spent an hour with Mr. Flannery and Mr. Tinklinburg today to do a lot of that homework. As I understand it, the impact fee balance is about $4 million. Is that right? Three to $4 million?
I'd have to verify that, Councilman Benson.
Mr. Tinklinburg, do you know?
I don't off the top of my head, no.
Because that's what I've been led to believe, is that it's between $3 and $4 million. It would seem that that's money that is specifically set aside for parks in the North because of the impact fees paid by the developers. And it was borrowed against to develop Pioneer Park here in the South, and that's been paid back. But the money's there. I'm just wondering why we can't get it spent to develop these two parks. And I'm not talking about parks that were promised by a developer. I'm talking about city parks, the two parks that I'm talking about. These are city parks. They're not developer parks. And I've heard complaints out of the South Lawn area, well, when are we going to get the swimming pool over here that Shea promised us? Well, that's Shea that promised that. That's not a city park. The two parks I'm talking about, between Second Creek Elementary and the Stewart Middle School, which are now two- or three-foot-high weeds, and the park on Chambers around 116th, 115th, those are both city parks. We've got $3 or $4 million in a park impact fee. I don't know why that money can't be spent on what we're talking about. And, you know, nobody's asking for this instantaneously unless you think nine years, eight or nine years is instantaneously. It's been about that long since these developments have been started and buildings started on them. They haven't developed as fast as anybody wanted them to because the whole economy left us, I guess, about four years ago. But we still have that money. We have the three or four. I would just like to have somebody look into the balance in that fund, and let's get these parks built out, not with a water park, just get some of the weeds removed and have grass planted in them, for goodness sakes.
Mr. Mayor?
So people can go out there and run around and have a good time.
Mr. Flannery?
I just wanted to mention, we can look at the fund balance in that fund and look at how we program it. I think to answer the specific question, why it hasn't been spent, well, I think part of it was just repaid through some of the one-time monies that came in in the last year to make that fund whole again, because there was a loan made to the Southern Park. I think if I had 10 minutes to sit down with Carolyn, my guess is she would say, yeah, we have this money, but how do you plan to make that expenditure? So, you know, what park gets covered? Where do you actually prioritize that specific expenditure? Because maybe two parks is $8 million and not four. So how do you actually program that money to be spent in the best way? And that's really where your input as the council comes from, because we wish there was a lot more impact money in there, but because of the economy and the development that didn't occur, that money is not as plentiful as it would be if we were building 1,500 homes a year. So I think that's a key part of this. So when we look at expending that money, I would just say that we can come back with a more specific detail, and I would recommend we do that as part of our retreat on the 12th. And we can give that information to you, Mr. Benson, ahead of time so you have that, since you won't be here for that 12th meeting.
Thank you.
But I think all of you, it isn't a North and South issue, and I agree that we are one city, but there are priorities and expenditures. And what you see in the last three or four years is a very trimmed-down budget because of the economy. You remember, we are being very conservative on certain expenditures and how we target them. I think we can look at one-time monies, but some of those are insurance policies. I think the impact fee monies that we're looking at certainly can be targeted because that's their purpose. And we'd be happy to put something together before we come back on the 12th.
Ms. Teeter, do you have a comment?
Yes, I was just going to agree with you, Mr. Flannery. I, with all due respect to all of you, we can argue all night long, back and forth, and we're never going to convince the other. So I'm proposing to move forward with the budget presentation, if that's okay with everyone.
Mr. Moreno, you're the only one left on the board.
Just, I really just have one last word, because the mayor knows how I like my last words.
Always the last word. And then that'll be the last word. I'm not going to, everybody else is done.
I think the conversation that we've been having has been largely unproductive, in my view. We can't segregate where we make revenues and then decide that those revenues where they're made can only be spent in the area where they're collected. I don't think that that can happen, because if you're going to apply that same philosophy, that same principle, then we would be applying all the revenues that we make off of the industrial manufacturing corridors in the southern part of the city, those would remain in the southern part of the city, but they don't. It's all one budget, North and South. I did have actually one last question for Ms. Keith. As I recall, 2010 was the first year that the golf course was actually in the black. Is that correct for the city?
When you look at our revenues and our expenditures, when you deduct the depreciation, we actually weren't with, we weren't able to, our revenues did not cover the collection of the depreciation.
Okay. Do we expect to be able to recover those revenues and hopefully end up in the black for 2011, 2012?
At this point, our revenues are trending similarly to what they did in 2010. It's still a little early to be able to tell that, but I would say we're on track for, similarly to 2010.
And as I recall, it's not a large gap that's there, but it would, I think, be helpful for our city to be making the golf course a revenue-producing, obviously, measure. So, thank you.
If I may, in closing, hopefully, we, I would just like to comment that the Prairie Ways Action Plan, which is the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan for what was the new lands or north of 96, there was the expectation that the HOAs and the metro districts would have a contribution in the Parks, Trails, and Open Space that's available. And I think with Mr. Flannery's suggestion of coming back and looking at our options, I think it would also be prudent for us to share with council what we do have as a result of our HOAs, metro districts, and cooperative efforts with both school districts, 27J and Adams County School District 14. Because when you look at all of those properties, you would see that we have just about equally in acreage, parks, and open space in the north of 96 as we do south of 96. And it goes back to this idea of one city. The city cannot be the provider of everything to everyone, and we do have to work cooperatively with the metro districts, the school districts, the HOAs for those Parks, Trails, open space, and amenities. And we do work cooperatively to provide programs in the Bell Creek Family Center and at the Reunion Recreation Center and in some of the 27J schools. So I think an opportunity, I'm not saying it's the cure-all or the answer to all of your discussion this evening, but I do think an understanding of what is actually available to our residents through all of the providers might help as you all look forward in your decision-making for use of that park impact fee or any of our other funds for CIP projects or funding sources for programs and services.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Acre, is it back to you?
To wrap up this evening's presentations, we have the Public Works staff presenting their revised, or their proposed budget as well.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2012 budget for the Department of Public Works. In this difficult economy, our theme for the past few years has been "back to basics." What are our core functions and what, how do we align available resources to those functions? There's been increasing responsibilities and generally flat resources. Our Public Works team takes very seriously the following ideas that were presented in Mr. Tinklinburg's presentation last time. Maintain current levels of service. Take care of what we have. That's very important from the public work standpoint. All of our divisions are focused on maintenance. Provide first-class service and continually improve operational efficiency. You've seen this slide before. This was presented at the last presentation. Generally, this is differences for the three divisions plus refuse collection. And for major variances, there aren't any for administration. What you see, there are some minor changes for salaries and benefits and the vehicle and computer allocations. Streets, traffic, and maintenance, there is $100,000 there for salary and benefits, which is for two new street operation texts. This goes with the amendment to the maintenance agreement with Adams County proposal that we're currently negotiating, and I'll explain that later. We have some major pieces of equipment that are being replaced, and the allocations for vehicles increase substantially. And outside services, to service the Adams County Maintenance Agreement amendment is an increase in expenditure. Snow and ice control, there's a realignment of salary and benefits that will essentially balance out if you look at street cleaning. These are to more accurately reflect where those salaries and benefits are spent. These are to more accurately reflect where those salaries and benefits are spent between those two divisions. The $94,000 increase in utilities for essentially electricity, these are for street lights and signals. The utilities and maintenance and repair costs will reflect what has been the actual cost in 2011 and also trending in 2010, excuse me, and trending in 2011. We have increased allocations in street cleaning. There is a replacement of a street sweeper in the replacement schedule, which I'll be showing you later. And refuse collection, that was discussed last time, and it is scheduled for a more in-depth discussion the next, in next week, so we won't dwell on that tonight. So, the major variances for the department total $1.2 million. Engineering Division, we have a new physician request. This physician is an engineering intern. It's seasonal. Several years ago, we were, we had to cut what essentially was two of those physicians. They do a lot of support work in the engineering division with inspections and that sort of thing. We cut them because there wasn't money for pavement management and concrete replacement, and that was the primary use for those. So, when we had money this year to do pavement and concrete flat work, we needed to add that engineering intern. If we need a second one, that'll come directly out of the capital expenditure that I'll be showing you. Enhancement requests in engineering, railroad facility damage costs, minor increase there, but it's replacing some expenditure that we've had in past years for damaged arms, flashers, and other equipment that usually happens from vehicles that we will then go after for insurance reimbursement. We need that for those repairs. This year, the City Council appropriated $47,605 for the Victory Crossing Erosion Control Maintenance, or re-establishment, essentially. What that money will be spent for is generally reseeding the Victory Crossing property so that the soil is stabilized. We've had some damage to tree lawns and other damage, and this $3,500 will be a continuing line item for maintenance of that investment over time. The Street Maintenance Division, I've mentioned the Adams County Commerce City Maintenance Agreement Amendment. And this summarizes the additional expenditures for that proposal. What this agreement amendment will do is better align the service areas, will make it easier for the staffs to communicate to the public which entity maintains what. The snow and ice materials is an increase because we're adding several major routes to our system, and dust abatement services are going to be needed for the dirt roads that we're going to be taking over. I'll be showing you a couple of maps just to give you a better idea of what that alignment will do. Other enhancement requests in street and traffic and maintenance include $10,000 for materials and supplies for regulatory signs. As you recall, there's a federal mandate to improve the regulatory signs across the nation for reflectivity. And our system is ready now to start that process of the inventory and getting that started. The $10,000 will go towards materials to change out the first part of those regulatory signs. We have probably three years after 2012 to complete that. The BlackBerry phones are supervisory staff, two supervisors and three foremen need BlackBerry phones so that they can communicate in the field and not have to come in to the shop regularly. They can pick up messages and use those phones. Finally, the paint striper is a piece of equipment that's had lots of use over several years and just needs to be replaced, so that's the cost of that item. I said I would explain a little bit about what this amendment to the Maintenance Agreement will include. And in the northern area, for the last several years, Adams County has maintained Brighton Road from 104th to 120th, 120th from west of US 85 to Tower, as well as dirt roads, Potomac, between Highway 2 and 96th, and Peoria, 96th to 104th, as well as 112th from Highway 2 to E-470, essentially. As I said, there's a number of, Brighton Road and 120th are heavily traveled arterials, and they will require the snow removal, be included in the snow removal plan, and the dirt roads will require grading and the dust abatement service. Go to the next slide, Darren. This slide is an area closer to the core city. It is generally bounded by 70th and 88th. And traditionally, the city has maintained this entire area from Daya East to Highway 2. As you can see, the white area is unincorporated Adams County. And so, the proposal is that they would assume responsibility for an area that encompasses most of this area that is in Adams County. So, that hopefully gives you an idea of what will be included in that agreement. It will be forthcoming when it is agreed to, generally by staff for council approval. The Fleet Maintenance Management Division is an internal service fund. As you can see, there is an addition of about $480,841. And those primary changes are in fuel. We're experiencing now about an annual rate of $500,000 for fuel. Hopefully, the price goes down, but the usage continues. So, that is based on current usage and price. Capital outlay of vehicle replacements, in 2011, there was a budget of about $1.1 million for replacements. In 2012, that increases to about $1.2. In order to maintain a schedule over a 10-year period on replacements, we're looking at about $1.2 on a regular basis. Depreciation increases, those are to essentially pay the first year of the replacement cost for those vehicles for future replacements. Capital equipment requests, our Street Maintenance Division is requesting two Ford Rangers pickups, essentially, for our street maintenance operations foremen. They're currently using one-ton trucks, which aren't well-suited for driving around town and could be well, much better used in the field for street maintenance work. This is the 2012 proposed vehicle replacement budget. There are three big expenditures there, the snow plows, two snow plows, and the sweeper. The sweeper is the last item on the list. The deferred means that from previous years, we were unable to keep to the schedule, which is based on a replacement plan. It considers the year of the vehicle, the mileage, ongoing repair costs, and other trends that give us an indication when those vehicles should go out of service before they start costing more than they should be. Finally, the Facility Maintenance Division. As you can see, there's a change of about $86,000 there. Adjustments have been made in outside services and utilities estimates based on actual expenditures. I hope that trend continues. We talked last time about the enhancement request for security system contract services. Again, this is annual maintenance and service of the security system in this building. It was previously in the Police Department and has been moved here to the Public Works Department, but that needs to be continually, continued into the budget. And the facility renovation request, there's a boiler in the rec center that needs to be replaced. There's three of them, and these, hopefully, we can keep them on a replacement schedule that two of them don't go out at once, and that's part of the plan here. Capital improvements and Preservation Plan for 2012, which Public Works Department has responsibility for. This is a significant investment, as you can see. The 120th Avenue cost share, this was to pay Commerce City's share of the project on 120th from Quebec to US 85. This is the second and final payment. This was also in this year's budget. The Dupont Neighborhood Improvements Cost Share, again, a shared project with Adams County. This project is finally under construction. Commerce City shares about one-third of the total cost, and that is moving forward. 104th Avenue, Phase 3B, we're now at Phase 3A, which is the intersection of US 85 and 104th. After that, we'll move to 3B, which connects the missing link between the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and where it has already been completed east of there. Pavement Management Program. The goal of the Pavement Management Program is to maximize the investment and value in our current street system. The idea there is to resurface the streets and get them into shape before they become a rebuild situation, cost the city more than they should. So, that's a balancing act, and we'll continue that project. This year, as you know, it included rebuilt, repaving Monaco Street, North 60th and 56th between US 85 and Quebec. Concrete Flatwork Repair Program, got over $3 million worth of concrete that needs to be repaired, and this is the next phase of that. Stormwater Utility Program, I'll be introducing Darren Sterling to talk about that program, and he'll provide some information on that directly. And then we have Dirt Road Paving Program, $235,000 from the transportation tax. We have some roads in town. This is particularly focused on Elm Drive, 69th to 72nd, and 71st Avenue to Udora. These are connected streets that have been dirt historically, and this would just pave those streets. Finally, aligning our, some of our projects to council goals. Next year, you can see some of the projects that most closely align to what we are working on or will be working on in the next year to two years. 104th Avenue Project, Tower Road Planning, 96th Avenue Planning, those two roads were the, out of the council's retreat, were the highest priorities. I'm sure there'll be others, and that will be providing support. The Refuse and Recycling Collection Program, I indicated we'll be talking about that next week. We talked about the Adams County Maintenance Agreement Amendment. The Stormwater Utility Fees Program, which Darren will be addressing, pavement management, vehicle equipment replacement scheduling is important to maintain so that you keep a reasonable fleet and not overbalance one year to the next. And our preventive maintenance programs are very important in fleet and facilities. That concludes our changes. Are there questions?
It's getting kind of routine. Ms. Teeter?
Good evening. Thank you for all you do and your staff. Great job on snow removal. I think I'd shared that with you before. Some people that lived in Thornton commented how they loved driving into our city because all the snow was cleaned and all on 104th and other roads.
We always like to hear that. Thank you. I'll pass that along to people who respond to it.
You're welcome. And I need to bring your crew some donuts again, along with yours, chief. Okay. I'm going to do it. I've done it in the past. I guess I was watching the map too closely, not paying attention very much, but what was this you were saying about proposed snow removal agreement with Adams County that would extend our operations to a wider area? I didn't hear all that.
For many years, Commerce City and Adams County have shared maintenance responsibilities because we have expanding boundaries and unclear boundaries. And to better focus both entities' efforts, we've come to an agreement on how we would share where each of us would provide services. We're trying to come to an agreement with the staff, at least, on a change to that that would better align what the city is doing and what Adams County is doing, based on definite jurisdiction at this point. There'll still be trade-off areas that doesn't make sense for Adams County to go to and that we can provide service to and vice versa. But that's the purpose of the agreement, is to make that more efficient, effective as far as services. And it includes all services for street maintenance, not only snow removal, but snow and ice, trash, weeds, asphalt work, grading, and everything that we do.
Well, that way, you'll have a plan in place, and you'll know who's doing what. Sounds great.
Right. That's the intent.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Benson?
I keep turning this thing off instead of turning it on. Thank you for your presentation. Can you go back to the slide that had the trash pickup in there? That's it.
That's the one you want?
I think we discussed part of this last week. This is the cost to the city, the $2,500,000 of trash pickup throughout the city. Is that correct?
Well, like I said, we'll have a presentation next week on the Well, like I said, we'll have a presentation next week on this program. Currently, the staff is looking at options on how best to provide that service, which includes some type of billing system that could be by the current carrier or internal to the city. So that's worst-case scenario.
Who would it be billed to?
What's that?
The individuals?
Yes, we have 13,700 units in the city. And so to essentially pay for the service, you'd have to bill each of those units and we'd have to develop a database and start a system to complete that.
And they have told us that it would cost an extra $602,000 to do that billing?
The proposal from Waste Management-
By shutting this off on our people, we increase the cost to them by $600,000?
The proposal by Waste Management to provide those billing services is $3.75 per unit, per month, which totals about that amount.
Is there anything in the budgeted revenues to offset that right now? Or is that something that this council is going to have to concern itself with in the future about whether we're going to start charging people for that? Is that something for future council consideration?
There's ways of transitioning this, Ian. The idea here was that those revenues that were on, that may be lost or suspect in the future from the state would be put into capital. And as you can see from the list of projects, that's where that went. And if that money is not recovered from the trash collections, then there'd have to be some kind of a trade-off.
Well, I know I talked to a lot of people this weekend. Everybody was pleased with the article that was in the Post. I was pleased with it. I thought it was a very excellent article about Commerce City. But what they learned was that we've got $10 million in reserves, which is six times what we're required to have, and we just loaned $4 million cash to our urban renewal authority. And if there's going to be any idea about starting to charge people for their trash pickup, I think a lot of people are going to be really, really upset about that. And I will not vote for that under any circumstances. We've never charged for trash pickup. We've got the money, which was proven by that Denver Post article. I don't know why that would even be considered, that we would start charging our people that much money, which would include $600,000 more just to do the collection process. That's just awful to try to show that off on our people.
There's no billing system in place at this point. It's a startup cost and there would be a continuing cost.
I know. I know. It costs money to do that, but that's just, if it's paid by one entity like it's being paid now, we save $600,000. Is that, is that correct?
Greg, aren't we going to be discussing this next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me.
I'm just saying something, Jim. This is on discussion next week. I want to talk about it as much as you do.
Well, I ask Greg a question.
But he can answer the questions probably better next week.
There are other options that we're reviewing and we think that that $600,000 is the worst-case scenario, but it is a realistic number.
All right. Well, thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Moreno?
Thanks for your presentation.
Greg, a couple of questions about the agreement that we have with Adams County. From my understanding, the street improvements that were done in the Monaco and DuPont neighborhoods, the city is splitting that cost with Adams County 50/50, correct?
It's based on actual frontage of the city in that area and it's about 30% is the actual frontage, so that's our share, Commerce City's share.
So we pay 30% and the county picks up 70 then?
Right.
Yeah, I was able to talk to a few residents at the Monaco Neighborhood Barbecue and while they think it's a large improvement, the work that Adams County has done in that area, there are residential streets in their vicinity that have been left out, that have not been repaved, that do not have street, don't have sidewalk, curbs or gutters. So that's obviously something that I'll take offline and discuss with Public Works and perhaps contact Adams County Public Works about that as well. But, you know, if we're footing somewhat of the bill, I think people should get what they, what they want. They should get what they pay for. And I think Commerce City can use our contribution as leverage to say that Adams County does need to take care of all the residents in that area and not just certain streets. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
In one-
Sorry.
Short response to that, looking at the map, the area between the tracks and between 72nd and 80th, most of that area was rebuilt in the last 10 years by Adams County with no, or very small contribution from Commerce City. They also built the DuPont area, which is west of that. So there's been significant progress in those unincorporated areas to finish those roads. The current project is on the south end of, towards 72nd and Ivy in that area. And so that should finish up that area, I think 100% between those tracks.
Okay. From what I understand, the two citizens I spoke to, they did receive notice from the county that their street was going to be paved and it never happened. And so they were a little dismayed with the county making commitments that they didn't ultimately fulfill. On the, your budget enhancements worksheet, if you can flip to that real quick. Some of the positions that you're proposing to add include two straight, street maintenance operators, I think, specifically for the projects in that area. Is that correct?
That is directly tied to the Maintenance Agreement Amendment because of the increased number of miles we have for snow and ice control and dust abatement, those positions are needed.
So that doesn't, that just includes street maintenance? It doesn't include, you know, repaving or anything like that?
No, that's minor maintenance, regular maintenance. If there is a need to repave a boundary street, the agreement will provide that the city and the county can agree to a cost-sharing formulary agreement in that case, something major like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Carson?
Thank you for the presentation and my question is very short. Do we own a semi?
No.
What's this 2,000 freight liner?
Those are snow plows, big, big snow plow trucks.
I'm saying, if you're looking at that thing, I can't figure out any reason why we'd own that. Thank you.
Those are replacements.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Greg. Could you go back to your slide on replacement equipment, the whole? Now, the, what you said, the ones that say deferred by them are pieces of equipment that should have been changed out at another time and we're getting to them right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. They were on last year's list, but then because the funding didn't provide that they could be replaced, they were deferred until this year.
Okay. Off to the side of each, it says PDD. What does PDD stand for?
Police Department Detective Unit.
Okay. And CDB?
That's Community Development Building Department.
Okay. Because there were people in the city that didn't know that you bought all the equipment for all the different departments. They thought that you just bought it for Public Works. And I want that to go out that when you're replacing equipment, you're not just replacing Public Works. You replace the police cars, you replace everybody's equipment on a timed schedule. So that budget of $1,194,000 is the whole city, not just Public Works.
I appreciate that clarification. We have over 400 units, cars, trucks, graders, et cetera. The one exception to that is in the golf course.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Greg, what happens to the vehicles and in terms of fleet maintenance, what happens to the vehicles that we replace? Do we recover any of that cost by selling them or?
After they've recycled through the system, they are auctioned. We have a roller auction takes care of them and then we, that goes to the fleet fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Mr. Flannery? Because that's our last from up here.
I just want to jump in on this specifically.
Okay.
You may remember I've repeatedly talked about the fund balances that we earmark sales and use tax towards a fund and there's a fleet fund. And that's, this is specifically one of those funds that we've come into and said, okay, we're going to take a big chunk of this and help fill the gap. That's been in past years. So some of the deferred vehicles are a result of us budgeting for a gap being filled with some of these funds. And so in this year's budget, we've come back and said, you know, we're looking healthier. Let's start funding a lot of these ones that have been deferred. And basically, it does throw it a little off schedule, but just like with IT, what we've said is, can you string this out another year? And I would bet, and maybe Greg, you can clarify, but I would bet that some of these may have even been deferred a couple of years.
I think you're probably right.
So, I mean, I think, you know, what we've done is said, let's, let's take the worst-case scenario vehicles and replace them. So some of these are really, probably still, some of them are probably safe, but it's just a matter of, they really need to get out of the system and go to the auction block and we can then go ahead and buy some, some new ones. So I just wanted to make mention of that because it really is a systematic. Now, what we've done in each budget year have, we've come back and found in the last year, we didn't have to actually take the revenue out of there because it's been filled in with carryover money. So anyways, I just thought I'd touch base on that.
You were just joking with me, right? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Flannery or Mr. Clements, when we replace those vehicles, do we look at investing in fuel-efficient vehicles?
Yes, that's always a factor. The infrastructure for several of the alternative fuels doesn't exist at this point, so we're keeping tabs on that industry as it moves forward and that is a consideration.
One of the things that we've discussed is coordinating with the school districts because they have fleets as well. And if there are alternative fuel stations that we can actually co-locate with some of our services and then when, then we actually, when we purchase vehicles that most likely, and Greg's going to tell me if I'm wrong, but most likely it's the passenger vehicles that are the most energy, alternative fuels. I don't think you can get a freight liner that's going to be too much of a fuel conservation, but we're trying.
We have looked at hydraulic-powered equipment. It's expensive right now, but yes, we are watching that industry.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If we're done with that, I'll introduce, like I indicated, Darren Sterling. The city council authorized a study to look at the feasibility of stormwater utility fees. That preliminary study phase has been recently completed and Darren's here to talk about the results of that and what we need to do to continue. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We've been working for some time now on a stormwater utility study and I'm here tonight to go over some of the results of that. We worked with an engineering consulting firm, AMEC, and we have John Swanson here, who's the lead project manager on that, that project. He's one of the most educated on these utilities in the whole Front Range area and he's had a lot of work in this area and so we've relied on him heavily to help us put this together. Let's see if I can make this work right. So the first part is, we've got an EPA-mandated stormwater management program that we have to maintain. And what that deals with is a lot of stuff in stormwater regarding construction and how we maintain systems and everything. I'll get into that a little bit more. Capital improvement needs is another area that we're going to go over. Maintenance needs, engineering and planning, and then finally, the administration. In the use of a stormwater utility, it's similar to a water or sewer utility. You use water every day, you drink it and use it, so you pay for it. On the other side, when you get rid of it, it goes through the treatment plant to dispose of. So not unlike that, same way with electricity and telephone, those other utilities. All revenue collected in this, this system would be dedicated to the stormwater program, which goes both capital improvements and maintenance. It's a fair and equitable system. We take a look at, at how it relates to residential units as well as to the commercial units and, and we figure out the balance there to make sure that everybody's paying their fair share and it's not, not unreasonably balanced one way or the other. The way we do this is, it's talking, it's something called perviousness and imperviousness. And if you think about farmland, there's no pavement, there's no buildings, no structures or anything on it. We consider that to be 100% pervious, which means that most of the water soaks in. In a developed parcel of ground, we pave it, we put buildings on it and drive on it and compact the soil and everything. And that results in water that flows off the property, whereas before it was maintained on the property. That water has to go through systems, either through storm sewers or ditches and then into the main creeks to drain off. So it's actually impacting those creeks a lot more than, than what you would think through the, just the increase in the flow, both on a daily basis and on a storm basis. And here's just a little example. You got, you got your house, your roof, sidewalks, driveways, garages, all of that stuff contributes to that stormwater runoff coming off. And we got plans in place, requirements in place to handle this through the street system and into the creeks and that and detention ponds, trying to manage it. But that stuff all ages and needs to be maintained over time. EPA's Water Quality and Stormwater Management Regulations. There's some, some required areas that we have to go through to meet the requirements of that. This is an unfunded mandate started back in about 1988, 1989 timeframe. Conduct public education and outreach. Some of the examples of that right now is at all the city outreaches that we have in the parks, we've got an ongoing presence there dealing with stormwater. Household chemical roundup, we participate in that twice a year. Periodic articles in newsletters and on the website, all the education-type things that we do. Public involvement and participation. We participate in regional cleanups on the Platte River and Sand Creek. That needs to increase into First Creek and Second Creek and Third Creek as we develop more and more in those areas. And it's a matter of trash just accumulates in those areas, cleaning that up and some of the other debris such as branches and things like that. And then we do, we participate in the annual Bar Lake cleanup, happens every year where they, you go out and clean up around Bar Lake. Track and eliminate discharges. What that is, is things like oil, fuel, sewage and cooking oil. Those are all examples of things that we've been involved with the cleanups over the last several years. And that oil cleanup could be anywhere- And that oil cleanup could be anywhere from a facility's oil tanks overflowing or somebody just dumping their oil down a sewer, storm sewer drain. So we've had those. Cooking oil, we had an incident where the EPA got involved and we cleaned that up. Construction projects and ensure compliance through inspection. We have construction standards now that require installation of all kinds of road control devices, fence, silt fences, things called wattles which we put in ditches, rock socks, socks, and other things like that that are all required. We go through a permitting process and inspection process and close it out and move on to maintenance. Implement permanent best management practices, that again is part of the maintenance side of the previous slide. And in addition to going back on the older properties that didn't really have those requirements in the past and trying to get them cleaned up and up to enough in terms of managing the stormwater. It's all about keeping the water clean before it gets to the rivers and the creeks. Complete pollution prevention and good housekeeping practices. We go around and inspect all the city facilities on an annual basis to make sure that we're doing the proper things in terms of storing materials and treating materials and getting rid of stuff that shouldn't be out there anymore that could get into the water system. So those are all requirements from the EPA, nothing that we can change. The most important thing to note here is that the EPA is continually increasing the requirements on us. There's new information coming out that we're going to be moving more and more towards numerical standards on some of the construction runoff and even in some of our storm sewers. And so those, it's just continuing increase in responsibility on the city, no funding to take care of this. Capital and maintenance. Implement capital improvement projects. We've got outfall systems throughout the city that don't exist and are in need of improvement so that as development happens, we're not stuck with flooding situations. A couple of examples of areas that we would want to work in early on would be First Creek between Highway 2 and 104th Avenue over towards Highway 85. The system really doesn't exist in there. Trained eye can see where it's supposed to be, but there's no, there's no real defined path. We would be going in establishing that. Irondale Gulch, another one that's basically from about 80th Avenue to 88th Avenue and runs off the Arsenal on through Commerce City and out to the Platte River. Another area which's been developed and doesn't have a system in it to help transport that stormwater. That would be another area that we'd plan on looking at as early as possible. Maintaining the existing system, deteriorating infrastructure. One of the projects that we would target early on is Fairfax Outfall. There's been a lot of talk lately about how the pond isn't functioning right and we need to do something, make it larger, stuff like that. We've looked at that a couple of years ago. We did a study to take a look at where's our bottleneck, what do we need to do to fix that? We've identified upsizing the outfall system when it was built. It was built for a much, much smaller storm than what we experienced today and so we would plan on going in there. That's a $2 to $3 million project to reconstruct that outfall basically from Fairfax Park down to the Platte River. The park itself and the drainage system there doesn't really need to be made any bigger. It'll handle it, but we just need to be able to get the water out of there. Upkeep and cleaning of channels, pipes, streets, and structures. We continuously have street maintenance going through, cleaning out inlets, cleaning pipes, and things like that on an ongoing basis. We need to do more in that area. Current needs and expenditures. Currently, the column on the left is the existing annual expenditures that is work that's associated with water quality or we can attribute to water quality and it gives you an idea of what we're spending today. And then the column on the left, on the right, pardon me, is really where we think we need to be in order to be doing a good job and getting capital improvements done to make sure that we don't have problems and try and head off problems that we potentially could end up with. So that ends up to be about $3.3 million is what we'd recommend for the funding of the utility. And what that breaks down to is a $6 a month charge for single-family residents. We wouldn't, we wouldn't look at the size of the property. It could be small, could be big, doesn't matter. We'd charge everybody the same on the residential side. And then when we move into the non-single-family properties, and those could be anywhere from apartments to retail establishments to industrial properties, this kind of gives you an idea of some of the different charges that would be associated with that. And what we would do is we look at the charge for the average single-family residents. That breaks down into a number and earlier I was talking about impervious area. We associate that with these properties and that works out to be about .21 cents per square foot of impervious area. So it's a very involved process to go through to determine what area of a property is impervious and what part's not and only capture the part that's impervious and base the fee on This here is a graph of a lot of the front range cities that already have stormwater utilities in place or stormwater fees in place. And the thing to note here is the lower numbers are representative of cities that are only funding partial programs. They're funding either parts of the MDS requirements or some portion of that. And then as you move up the line there to the more expensive cities, you move into areas where they're doing more, more capital work in addition to their stormwater quality requirements. And Fort Collins is up there at 1426. They're the pack leader for everybody, but that's a little bit out of range for us. Next, we're going to talk about the billing options. We've looked at really two different billing options. One is using the, doing this through the city's finance department and in building a system with staff and software and processes and everything. The other part that we looked at is using the county treasurer's office. We can, we can contract with the treasurer, give them our billing and they would bill it on the annual property tax as a fee and collect that money that way. Going through all of this and really looking at breaking it down into the components, cost effective is through the county treasurer's. Finance department gives us our own billing system. We would recommend a kind of a hybrid of that. We would go through the county treasurer to collect the bulk of the money, but then you have other things to deal with such as properties that are non-taxed that we would need to pick up. And then we've got development that happens throughout the year and so billing would be picked up on those properties as we would move through the year. And then when we moved into the next year, they would be picked up on the regular billing system at that point. The county's piece ends up costing about 1.5% or about $45,000 a year to do that billing through the county. So you can see that that's pretty cost-effective. Next steps on implementation. We would, upon your direction, we would move into public information. Additional study information will be provided on websites and mailings and what have you that way. Start a stormwater awareness campaign, meetings with select groups. And really in that area, it's wide open. We'd of course want to hit the businesses in as many areas as we can to get them educated, work with the HOAs, any other group that we can make contact with to get the information out. Refine the revenue and fee information to provide more accuracy. Right now, this information is based on some assumptions and we would go through and actually boil that down to actual numbers, develop the database and just refine that into an accurate parcel-by-parcel structure. The rate structure, as I talked before, would be .21 cents per square foot. That would be applied to the database information to develop the billing system or billing that we would then send to the county as we recommended. This here lays out a timeline that would get us to be able to start billing in 2013. It's going to take about a year to go through refining all that information and putting the billing together. And so we would be looking at final rate approval as far as possibly next August, could be sooner, just depends on where the council's at with this and how quick we can get everything together. And then we would need to be ready to submit the billing to the county in about mid-October to mid-November timeframe in order to get it out in the 2013, I think it's March or April when they sent out those bills. And so that concludes this information and I'm open to questions.
Mr. Moreno.
Darren, thanks for your presentation. When I look at the stormwater utility fee and then the possible refuge collection fee, they're both two endeavors that I was interested in looking at because they do eat up such a large portion of our budget. But the more I look at it and how much it's going to cost the average resident on a monthly basis, the more I'm uncertain about it. I'm not in any way backtracking, but I guess I didn't calculate the dollars and cents that it'd mean to the average resident on a monthly basis. It worries me. I think we're asking for a lot. And I think that this council has to have a much more in-depth discussion when we have that discussion about the refuge collection fee as well.
Mr. Bullock.
Yes, Darren. How many homes would we be collecting from for this stormwater fee in the city? Do you know approximately?
Greg mentioned earlier, there's a little over 13,000 units that we currently pick up trash. Our number would be a little bit less than that because townhomes and apartments and duplexes weren't factored in as single families. So it's going to be someplace a little less than 13,000.
Okay. Kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Moreno said, it's something that we're going to have to look at because it seems like we're going to the citizens, even though I know that if we don't do it now, it's going to be something down the road that we're going to have to do because they're mandating it and we're doing it and we aren't collecting anything off. Well, we are collecting something for reviews and inspections that we do because we get to charge them for that. But I think what really confuses me when I look at your billing options and how much it costs, then I look at $600,000 and it's, we're basically billing about the same people. And I'm trying to figure out why trash is so much more expensive to bill them than it is for this stormwater fee. And you had two options and one that combines that would make it that we could probably do the same thing with trash billing and bring that $600,000 down to around about $55,000, $60,000 also. So it's, I keep thinking about how does somebody charge us $600,000 exactly? Are they going to walk out and give everybody their bill personally? That confuses me right there because of when I looked at you, if you would go back to You passed it.
Oh, the billing options.
Yes, the billing options. And that billing recommendation, you said it had both advantages. How much would you say that would cost approximately each resident?
The part that I was referencing on that cost is about $45,000 to do the bulk of the billing through the county treasurer's office.
And that's the setup and everything?
Mm-hmm. What we're doing is through, outside of finance, we would be putting together basically the billing in a database. And that's just purely keeping the database up with who owns what property, what their address, mailing addresses and all that is. And then their imperviousness, what their charge is going to be, that would all just be done in a database. And then that would be given to the county, which would then in turn drop it into their system and it'd just become another figure on their bill that gets mailed out with everybody's bill. So there's a lot of economies of scale built in with the county.
Okay. If the city financial department did it alone, standalone with the billing, how much would it cost? Or if you don't have those numbers, don't worry about it because seeing how you planned it the other way with the billing, you might not have those standalone numbers.
I don't have those numbers in front of me right now.
Okay. Thank you.
We could provide something next week.
Thank you for, I know this is something that's coming. I've known this for about five or six years that it's something that we're going to have to do because we're being mandated by EPA. Every year they're adding on something else in order to keep clean water. This is part of the Clean Water Act. So if we have to do it and it's unfunded, we're paying for it anyway. And the little fees we get off of inspections and everything aren't going to be enough. It's just like you showed, $800,000 out of a $3 million budget isn't going to cut it. So, but thank you so much for your presentation.
The fees, the fees that we collect really are built just around recovering our costs associated with providing that piece of the service. So they don't really go very far beyond actually providing that service.
Would you just go back one slide for just a second? Okay, now go back one more. I'm having, okay, non-single-family properties. Never mind. Okay, that answers. Those are business rather than residence.
Correct.
Okay, never mind. Mr. Moreno.
Just to piggyback off the mayor, the non-single-family, the collection fee you said was not factored in, correct? Only on single-family residential units?
Single-family residential units would be billed at $6 a month.
Right.
Non-single-family would be billed in this more precise way where we'd look at the impervious area and determine actual imperviousness on that property.
So they'd be more treated like a commercial property in that sense?
Correct.
And would that bill then go to the management company or whoever owns the, for example, apartment or multifamily units?
It really depends on the ownership because in the case of a townhome situation, each one of those individual units would be owned. We would, we would need to look at breaking that up into those units and then they've got common ground, which is listed under the HOA or something like that. They would in turn also get a bill. Condos, not exactly sure how that, that works out because that gets apportioned, you know, on how they stack up.
Okay. And could you remind me again how much money we are currently paying for stormwater utility out of the general fund?
We're not paying anything on the utility. We are paying about $871,000 a year that's attributable to stormwater, what would be stormwater utility items. So that includes some maintenance in there, some of the staff time for managing the stormwater requirements in terms of construction, inspection.
Okay. But there are infrastructure projects that we need to do in order to keep up with our stormwater demand?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a lot of stormwater infrastructure that's needed to support all this.
Great. Mr. Benson.
Yes, thank you. Darren, thanks for your presentation. As Mr. Moreno said, this is $43 million. That's the total capital cost?
That's what we've identified that we would like to make those improvements over the next 20 years. There's more that goes beyond that that hasn't even been identified. There's more that goes beyond that that hasn't even been identified. This just gets us started and gets you into the ballpark of putting together the program and coming up with a fee.
But any charge that might be made to our citizens would be based on the installation of new infrastructure or the repair of existing infrastructure? Or is it a new expenditure? It wouldn't just be charging for something that's already there?
New infrastructure and maintenance of existing infrastructure.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carson?
Thank you. Well, I guess I have the same question. Mr. Benson, does I keep turning on and off? To me, when the light's on, that should mean the microphone's on. And when the light's off, it means the microphone's on. The $6 per single-family home, did I understand that right? That's what the charge?
Yes.
You're thinking of? And then, I mean, I really don't have a problem with that. If we're, I'm setting up here thinking, what is it that we're passing on to the citizens with the trash collection? This, this one bothers me way less at looking at and saying right now today that maybe this is something we should do. Infrastructure is so important to take care of and not pass that down because the price just continues to go higher and higher. But on your commercial buildings, you gave us a chart that shows what other cities charge for single-family homes.
Right.
Right? But there's nothing there that shows what they're charging for commercial. Is that right in line with what others are charging for commercial?
When I went through the breakdown of the imperviousness and how that fee works out, that same number is blended into each one of these based on the monthly fee that they would charge for single-family. You can break that back down into that imperviousness and then apply it to those other properties. It's just simpler in terms of discussion here to go through the single-family residents than the other one because, you know, the commercial properties vary so much in size. So it's really difficult to pinpoint a number for any one of them.
And then can you go to the commercial? There we go. I don't know if you can answer this or not. This large commercial industrial, do you have a clue how many of those are in our city? Because that's a pretty hefty amount there of $370 a month.
John, do you have any of that? Last one.
Thanks for bearing with me. Eighty-eight percent of the commercial lots in the city are one acre or smaller. And the average of those is about 7,500 square feet. And then the charge, monthly charge on those would vary between $10 and $50 a month. There are commercial properties that fit in the large category. There's about 819 of them. And they're about 200, this says industrial acres, there are 200,000 industrial acres. And that works out to be about $412 a month on those larger parcels.
So we could have a fairly large impact on some of our industry here in the city if we do this?
It would all be proportional to what we're charging on a single-family residence. And it's all based on how much runoff they're generating from the property. So it's, you're paying for what you're using.
And all those cities that you showed, if they were doing business in those cities, they would be paying that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I have another question. Is it illegal for citizens to collect their own runoff?
I believe with water rights, it is illegal.
It's always everywhere. It's not just city by city.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Because that water, that water is a water right. It belongs to somebody. It's allowed to fall on your property, runoff.
Yeah, that's what I've been told.
If you look up on, just by example, Second Creek up there on 112th where the little bulb is, or over on First Creek over where it crosses Highway 2 and the railroad track, you notice right over by the canal, there's some concrete spillways there. That's all designed because the ditch company has water rights on each one of those ditches and they take that water every time it rains.
Yeah. I was just curious. I know it's a practice that a lot of people are looking into, so.
Yep, I know. Great water for irrigation of your plants.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
This is a question you may not be able to answer. Your consultants might be able to help you with it. Why is Fort Collins so high?
If you remember, some number of years ago, they had a large rainstorm and there was a lot of damage that was done throughout the city. They went through a fairly extensive process to look at their whole system and all their requirements. They changed, they got much stringent, more stringent requirements now. They redid their rainfall intensity, which then translates into runoff, which requires all of their systems to be bigger, much bigger than what they were. And so they're embarking on a very major capital improvement program, and that's what it's taking to meet that need.
It showed that they started in 2005, so I guess for the first couple of three years there, taking that money and saving it up in order to, so they're beefing up their whole system, canals, drainage, everything. So if they ever have a storm like that again, it'll be able to handle the runoff.
That's correct.
And they won't have the damage they had back then.
That's correct.
They are collecting a lot of money.
Mr. Moreno?
Darren, some of these new infrastructure projects that are proposed that will perhaps come as a result of the fee, will those then help to reduce the flooding that occurs in our city, particularly along like US 85? That area constantly floods when we have a big storm there. And some of the residential areas I know flooded as well when we had the last big storm. Will that, will these projects be used then reduce the chance that those areas will flood?
Yes. We will work on that in terms of rebuilding the existing infrastructure, the maintenance part, as well as going into the actual capital improvement part, such as the Arundel Gulch or the First Creek where those systems just don't exist. So they've got localized flooding that you may not hear about where, you know, everybody has, you know, two, three, four inches of water sitting everywhere. So yes, we will be working on all of that system.
Great. And I'm sure I'll remember my other question in a minute. Thank you.
Mr. Flannery, before we go any further, we've been sitting here about three and a half hours. How much longer do we have? Because we're going to need a break.
Mr. Mayor, Council, that's up to you. This is our last presenter tonight.
How much longer do you have, sir?
However long you have questions for me.
You say that all the time, Mr. Moreno. But you never really do it.
I prefaced it this time, though. I said I would come back to my question once I remembered it. What partnerships will we be entering into with South Adams County Water on this project, if any?
Through our study, we explored the possibility of using them to do the billing. And it just didn't seem like it was going to work out with them. I think they may even gone so far as to say that they didn't want to really work with us. So it really wasn't a viable option.
So none of these infrastructure projects that we'll be using the storm water utility fee for, none of those require partnerships with the Adams, South Adams Water District?
To the extent that facilities need to be relocated, so we may be building a storm sewer, we may need a sanitary sewer to be lowered or raised or something like that, we would need to enter into partnership with them on those pieces. But anything beyond that really isn't something that's even known or feasible at this time.
Okay, thank you.
South Adams isn't responsible for storm water runoff, so that's all our responsibility.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm showing 9:50. We're going to take 10 minutes. We'll start up again at 10 o'clock. Because I know we have our two longest sections left. Did you talk to him? Would you do that for me? Would you do that for me?
They both talked.
Oh, man. Okay, Mr. Flannery, would you finish up, please? Or are you finished?
I promise I'll be quick. Very quick things. Just want to let you know, I think you're going to discuss the letter from Jim Robinson, county administrator.
Yes.
We have another letter.
Are you doing administrative now or are we still doing budget?
No. I think I went to reports.
We're through with the.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're done with budget.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We all approve of. Just your report.
Okay, now we're at administrative business.
That's your, that's your.
Okay. Okay. Friday, we had Adams County Executive Breakfast. And what was agreed on at that breakfast was that a letter would be signed by all of the Adams County elected officials to be sent to the Adams County Sheriff requesting a 60-day extension regarding the implementation of the proposed limitation on municipal court prisoners sentenced to the jail. That's become quite a challenge and quite a news item. The extension allow us, as the cities in Commerce, in Adams County, to discuss the alternatives to what's been proposed by the sheriff. You each got a copy of the letter. It's just going to be signed by all of us and all we're asking for is a 60-day extension so we could all sit down and talk about this because it appeared to some of us that the decision was made outside of contacting any of the cities involved. I understand they have a problem with their budget, but there's got to be a way that we can all get together and work on it. Does anybody on council have a challenge with that letter going out? And just for your, you know, for your information, we've also drafted a letter for the signature of the city manager. Mr. Gaylor, do you want to add something?
I just want to reaffirm what the mayor has said. Adams County Jail was built with a bond issue that was supported by all the cities in Adams County. And right now Sheriff Dar has made the unilateral decision to limit the number of municipal prisoners, prisoners that are sentenced by the municipal court to, Commerce City happens to be four. Right now, we have seven prisoners up there. And those are repeat offenders and serious type crimes that have been committed. So this letter is really important. When the mayor said it will be signed by all of the cities, he was referring to the mayors of all of the cities. And it needs to go out soon as possible, and that's why it's being presented to you this evening. Because September 1 is the date now, is the drop dead date for cutting back those prisoners. And we need an extension, as all the other cities do, to at least put us to November 1. That's what we're asking for, to get this thing resolved. So what the mayor is asking is to make sure there's no objection from any, from the council for us to send out this letter.
I have no objection, and I commend the mayors for doing it. But can we get a presentation? I know citizens.
Can you shoot me?
Oh, okay. Citizens are out there wondering. And I thought that the judge had gone to Brighton or something and done a presentation. And I know we're in the budget thing and it's difficult to fit anything in. But even if you or Mr. Flannery can do something because.
You mean right now?
Well, you don't have to right now, but.
Well, I can tell you now, first of all, the judge made a presentation to the city manager and me about the dire consequences of this action.
Yeah, I would like the citizens out there to understand this.
Okay, well, basically, just to reiterate, that jail is large enough to accommodate the prisoners. The problem that we're incurring is a disagreement between the sheriff's office and funding from the Adams County Commissioners as far as the number of employees that the county will fund for the sheriff to provide security in that jail. That's the real issue. It's not a matter of space. It's a matter that the sheriff is saying, I don't have enough people to provide security for that jail. So therefore, I got to cut back of the number of prisoners that are allowed up here.
And we've been limited to four.
Pardon me?
But that's the proposal, is that we are limited to four.
Limit is four to Commerce City, and it's based upon population. That's where Commerce City gets four. Now Westminster, being larger than Commerce City as an example, has more, and I think their number is seven. Thornton has more, probably about the same number. You get the idea. But what the cities are trying to do, the mayors, as the mayor has indicated, is that the mayors of each of the Adams County cities will find, will sign this letter addressed to the county commissioners and have Sheriff Dar also involved with that to make sure that there is an extension of the September 1 date so that we can have productive discussions with the sheriff to try and get this issue resolved. Because if it's not resolved, the sheriff will say, I have to, I, the sheriff, will cut loose prisoners that are in excess of what I, the sheriff, is allowing in that jail. And for Commerce City, it would mean he cut loose three prisoners. And that's the problem that we're confronted with.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, also, I think, to add to that, these two letters, and if you don't mind, I'll just throw mine into the mix and the discussion. Both of these letters are intended to request an extension. There was an extension from August 15 to September 1 that was given by the sheriff, I believe by the sheriff. But I think by allowing, you know, 60 days extension, we can have some of that presentation in front of you so that you can actually get a better understanding instead of this kind of shoe-from-the-hip type timeframe that we've been working with so that we can actually get in front of you and present something.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
James? Mr. Bullock?
Is the sheriff allowed to do this unilaterally? I mean, does he have the authority to actually tell the cities how many prisoners they can send? He's an elected official just like the commissioners.
And you've just made the point, is that he is an elected official. He's not working for the commissioners as an employee. And under the state statute, the sheriff has responsibility for the jail. And as the person responsible for the county jail, the sheriff then has the responsibility to determine what is adequate security in that jail. And that's the catch. Whoever he hires is paid for with funding approved by the county commissioners. So the sheriff can't hire people unless the commissioners authorize the payment under their budget. And right now, there's a disconnect there where the county commissioners are not authorizing sufficient funding in the sheriff's eyes to provide adequate security for the jail.
Did they cut his budget or is it more deputies that he wanted to hire?
They've done a combination of. They've done a combination of cuts and position freezes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, I would move that the council authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign both of those letters.
Second.
Let's get them out.
Ms. Teeter?
Well.
I will second that motion. Mr. Benson?
I have a motion and a second to approve both letters for signature. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Mr. Benson, do you have something else?
Well, I have some administrative council business.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I thought we were gonna take up the issue of citizen communication tonight. Is that gonna be something that we're gonna be able to do?
Did you miss the vote from last time?
I thought we put it off until.
Till Jason came back.
Will he be here next week?
I have no idea.
You know, he might not be back.
But.
The Verizon strike is over.
Okay.
The strike is over, Mr. Mayor, so he should just be here next week.
He should be back by next week. I would imagine that since next week is budget and the following week is budget, the first time it would come up would be the 19th. Okay?
We know.
Stick it on that. That would be fine.
If we're going to modify our calendars and our agendas, because a council member can't be here. You know, I told the council I was gonna be out of town for the September 12 meeting several months ago, and in some way, we've got this budget retreat set for September the 12th. So I would ask that that be moved to September the 19th, because I would like to be here for it. Council has known about that for months, that I was gonna be out of town.
If anybody have a problem with it moving to the 19th?
No.
Not seeing any?
Thank you.
Mr. Flannery and Mr. Gaylor, if you would move the first, what?
The budget discussion?
No, 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 no. The citizen communication. Citizen communication to the 19th. Oh, no, we're not changing budget.
That's not what I asked.
Sorry, we're not, that's not even gonna go anywhere.
Well, I'm asking that. I'm asking if we're gonna make those exceptions for one council member. I would like to have that same exception made, because this is an issue that council has known about for months. And somehow, the budget retreat gets scheduled on September 12th, when I just so happen to be out of town. Is it just gonna be a one-sided type of council policy, or is it gonna apply to all of us?
Is there a question, Mr. Mayor?
No, Mr. Gaylor gave me a sign like, "Wait a minute," so I was waiting a minute.
Is there a question? That's what I'm asking.
I don't think, I'm not sure that there is.
Yes, the question is if we can move the budget retreat to the 19th instead of the 12th. That's the question that Mr. Benson asked.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
And I've already scheduled something for the 19th from 3, from 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So then I'll ask to push it another week? Is that how we're gonna do that?
You know, Mr. Mayor, we're running into some state law requirements.
Yes, I know we are.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend going, I mean, I think, I don't know if, I don't think, I don't know. I'd like to get a consensus if we're gonna go beyond the 19th.
Well, let me just say, you know, I'm not gonna be here because of extensive travel. It's already been arranged. I can't change that. I don't know, would it be possible, Mr. Mayor, for you to change that particular?
I have no intentions of changing it, sir.
I ask you if it would be possible. I know what your intention is.
I said no, sir. I said no. The answer is no. The citizen, I don't understand why the citizen communication, you people have eight meetings left with the people who are leaving. Why is it so important to change that prior to the new council coming in?
We're not talking about citizen communication at this point. We're talking about changing the budget retreat to September the 19th. As I said, I made the council aware of this months ago, that I was gonna be out of town from the 7th through the 18th. And in some way, the budget retreat gets scheduled right in the middle of those dates. I don't know why. I hope it wasn't intentional by anybody.
No.
But here we are.
It would seem that this happens with your trip each year, not just this year. This has been budget time each time, and each time you've been on the same trip.
Well, let's just see if we have a consensus. I would like to move it to the 12, to the 19th this year. You know, we could have done it this week or next week. We could do it next week, as far as I'm concerned. And I do have that conference that I go to every year for E470 that occurs about the second week of September.
Well, I guess the answer is, is it more important for you to be there or me to be there?
Well, I don't want to put it on that kind of a personal basis, but if you want to, we can.
I don't mind if we change it to the 19th. What my, my thing's gonna seem insignificant when you get to that, so it doesn't bother me if we change it to the 19th.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Isn't there a way we can resolve this without
No.
having to vote for one or the other here? Is there?
Can you, if you can supply it, would you please do it? I mean, if we can have it before the, we don't have to have it on a Monday. See, that's what's funny, is everybody's looking at Monday. What about between, when do you leave, Jill?
The 7th.
The 7th, when do you get back?
The 18th, which is a Sunday. So that's why I'll be back on the 19th. And of course, the 4th is, or the 5th is Labor Day.
Yeah.
So the 6th would be fine for me also. But I'm going out of town from the 7th through the 18th. So anytime before Labor Day weekend, or after September 18th.
Can we do it on the?
It'll be fine with me.
Can we do it on the 6th?
Neither can I.
It'll be tight, but I think.
Neither can Kathy.
You know, I mean, I wanted to be in the conversation about the citizens' communication. But it will probably take place next week, and I've already, a month ago, said I would be gone next week. I'm not gonna ask you to change it for me. But you're right about the budget. Everybody should be involved in the budget. And is, and this is, everybody should be involved in the budget. But from the 7th to the 19th, that is a really long time for us not to have a budget. You know, I mean, if you could be, you have to leave, well, I guess your ticket's already so bought.
What about on Wednesday night, August 31st, or Tuesday night, August 30th?
You guys can have it without me. I, go ahead and have the budget without me. I don't mind. It won't hurt my feelings if you have the budget discussion without me. But what we need to do is either say we're gonna have to keep it the same day or move it to the 19th. And we need to have a vote on that right now, because we see that the only dates we have are the 12th or the 19th. And so why don't we just have that consensus vote, because we don't have any other dates, right, Bob?
If you, we could do the 6th.
They said, two people said they can do the 6th.
All right.
Three of us.
What about August 30th, 31st, and September 1st?
You can do it without me. I do not mind.
Would we have to have a Monday night meeting and then the other thing on Tuesday, or?
Yes, unless you cancel the Monday night meeting.
Which is already a budget meeting.
Okay.
We can do the 19th, and it's, you know, we have to look at the facilities. We've got the facility on the 12th already scheduled, so if we go to the 19th, we'll have to find that facility. This room should be available, but depending on, you know, I don't know if there's a court date. Sometimes the court has a trial.
Where's it gonna be held currently?
Here.
Here, okay.
On the 12th?
12th is scheduled for this room, yes.
Let's vote either the 12th or 19th.
How about another night?
But the only nights, if you want to do it the very first week of August, I do not mind. I won't be here until that Friday, the 2nd. Now, if you want to do it Friday, the 2nd. Does anybody have an objection with Friday, the 2nd?
I do.
Okay.
I'm having a medical procedure done.
You guys pick a nice date, and if I'm here, I will be here, but I will not object to not being here.
Let's vote on the 12th or the 19th.
Who has an objection to the 30th, 31st, and September 1st?
I'm gone, but don't worry about me. As much as I would love to be in the discussion, I'm not gonna hold you guys up because of one person.
Thank you, Renee.
I will be in Aspen.
I was there yesterday.
Okay, if you move to the 30th or the 31st, you got one on the 29th and one on the 30th or the 31st. You have two meetings. Well, I'll start with me. 12th is the day that works. Ms. Teeter?
The 12th.
Mr. Diaz? Mr. Bullock?
12th or 19th, it doesn't matter, but whatever day that the majority goes with.
Ms. Carson?
I agree with 12th, I have 19th.
Mr. Benson?
19th.
Mr. Marino? Okay, 12th. It'll be the 12th, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Benson, did you have anything else?
Yes, I did. I ran into the Richmond Home salespeople over in Reunion South Lawn. And they made me aware of a situation where they put out some signs which kind of directed people into their sales office, but the signs were removed by the city because of the sign code. I don't, I don't know exactly what that code says about that kind of signs, but it seems like if we're trying to remove signs that are directing potential buyers into their sales rooms, that we're inhibiting their ability to sell houses. And that's, I don't think that's our intent here. So is that something that we could look into and see what our sign code says, and talk about how we might be able to alleviate that situation so that we no longer inhibit the ability of our developers to sell their houses?
Well, as you well know, Mr. Benson, the law is the law. However, I believe the council, a couple of years ago, did say that we might consider loosening up some of the sign regs during the economic downturn. So I'd need to go back and talk with both Mr. McBroom and Mr. Hayes to define where or when that loosening up changed.
Because the thing is, we're almost at the end of the summer, summertime's when people are out looking. And I just hate to do things that prevent people from knowing that there's houses for sale. I mean, my goodness. We need to sell, I mean, Richmond said that they were selling about one house a week, but that they could sell more, because the more people that visit their showroom, the more houses they sell. They get 15 people a day, they're gonna sell more houses than if they get 10 people a day. But I don't know.
Not knowing the circumstances, I don't know if it was blocking the sight-visibility triangle for traffic. It's hard to, it's hard to determine. I imagine if they were taken down, they must have imposed some type of potential hazard, but we need to discover that.
Yeah, that would be, if it's a hazard, then maybe we can work out something where they can put it in another place. I don't know. I just, we can't be inhibiting that sort of activity. I don't want to create a hazard, but, well, anyway, I just wanted to make the staff aware of that. Also, did you get, you got a copy of that resolution from Dr. Cog that they would like for us to pass before the, like, mid-September?
Yes, I did.
The $67 million in federal funding that Dr. Cog wants to get a part of. So I would ask that that be put on, does anybody have any objection to that being put on our agenda as a resolution, so we can have a discussion about it and vote on it?
Okay, seeing so no objection. Mr. Flannery, if you'll handle that?
And also, I think we discussed before, there are a lot of trees along 104th where the tops are dying. Is that because of the hailstorms, or what? What causes the tops of the trees to die?
A lot of it is because of the hail. And many of those are scheduled for replacement, as you heard Carolyn Keith describe tonight.
But probably if the dead parts of it were just pruned off, I think maybe the tree could recover. But it just looks bad to have those branches sticking up in the air, and they're obviously dead. No leaves are growing off of them, but, well, anyway, if we're looking at that, that's fine. That's all I have for administrative council business.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, and all your packets, everybody should have received one of these, and I want to use my discretionary funds to fund a foursome. I would like other council members, if you have the ability to do it also, because this is really a benefit to the city high schools. Each one of them gets a scholarship behind this, and then there's also two other scholarships, an athletic scholarship and a extracurricular activity, leadership scholarships that are given out because of this, because of the funding. And the BETA is a Commerce City organization, Becoming Educated to Achieve Success. And it's a 501(c)(3)C, and if you look into the background of it, I think that this would be a really good group if you can fund a foursome, to fund it, and show that our council is directly involved with promoting education and scholarship in the city. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of that $400 of my discretionary funds will be used to fund a foursome, and I hope they play better than I do.
So do I.
Oh, Kathy, oh, that's cool.
Thank you. Okay, reports. Mr. Flannery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You also have an update on the long range. There's a memo there from Mr. Tinklenberg to me, and we gave you a copy of that. That's just an update.
Will that replace, will that replace the update on the agenda?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And then, just wanted to let you know, in your update that you see on the dais, Mr. McBroom and I met with Mr. Riggo. I think that's.
Yeah.
And we're looking into his issue. I think he certainly presented some, I think, valuable information that we're gonna look at. And then, lastly, I'd like to ask, I was wondering if she's still here. Michelle Halsted, she's got a brief update to give you on the King Supers grand opening.
Thank you.
And then that'll be it after this.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor and members of council, so on your council calendars, you have, should have the 9:00 a.m. groundbreaking, which will be the official groundbreaking for the King Super store at 104th and Chambers. We're also, we've also been able to finalize a community element to that. From 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning, we will be handing out donuts and/or cookies free to folks coming in to 104, off of 104th to welcome, King Supers wants to welcome everyone to the neighborhood. So they're gonna be providing some, I like to call it the donut drive-through, but that's probably not exactly accurate. But I would encourage you, we'll add that to your council calendar as well. So if you want to come out from 6:30 to 8:30 and help us hand out gift goodies to folks who are coming westbound 104th, that would be great, too. But that's kind of the extra part of the groundbreaking, and we're finalizing the agenda. And I'll send that out to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Gaylor, do you have anything?
I had a question of Ms. Halsted.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you. Exactly how is that gonna work, Michelle?
Thanks to Greg Clemens and Darren Sterling, the right lane of 104th, we're gonna tweak a little bit so people can kind of come into that lane. It'll be coned off.
So people will just, will be in their cars and as they drive by?
Yep, and we're gonna hand them a thing on the right-hand side.
Okay, thank you.
Little drive-through. Little drive-through.
Okay.
Mr. Gaylor?
I don't have anything except to remind council, I previously sent you an email telling you I'll be on vacation, starting this Friday, and I'll be gone for one week.
Terrific.
Karen Stevens will be acting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Yes. I attended Denver Black's funeral last week, along with Bob Gaylor, and you would not, you would be surprised that all the older residents of Commerce City that knew Denver that were there for the funeral, and it was really well-attended, and it was really a nice send-off. And they had pictures of, and if you would have seen Derby, back when it was only black garage there in dirt streets, it's a, it's amazing transformation for a gentleman that was born, lived his whole life in one block in Derby, you know, and saw the whole transformation from the time that he, 19, well, I guess when you're a baby, you don't care what you see, but from when he was old enough to see till just, since June. Also, yesterday, I attended the Colorado Country Music Hall of Fame Awards, and I was one of the presenters. And they're looking for a home, and they are kind of trying to settle on Commerce City, so we're doing all we can to get them to choose Commerce City as a home of the Colorado Country Music Hall of Fame. And it was a very nice award ceremony yesterday. It was great entertainment and great awards. Thank you. That's me.
Jazz?
No reports.
Ms. Teeter?
No report.
Ms. Carson?
No report.
Mr. Benson?
Of course.
Of course.
Last Tuesday, I went to the Cars Club, where the sole topic of discussion was the hearing coming up in front of the Adams County Planning Commission, and I've got to say that those people are very organized, there's going to be a lot of people from the Cars Club there. They're all going to be 100% against that facility going in at that location, just as our city's against it. I don't know anybody who's for it, except the people who own it, or who want to own it there. But I was very impressed at the Cars Club. It's a very organized group, and they're going to be very organized for that meeting. We had a Dr. Cog meeting on Wednesday, and one of the issues was to approve this annual report given by RTD about how they're thinking about going to the voters next year with a 4/10 of 1% increase in the sales tax, so that they can build out fast tracks. There's nothing in there about where that money's going to be spent, or anything else. I don't know whether it's going to be spent on extending the line down to Colorado Springs, or what, but we had a vote. There were four of us, out of about 35 people who were there, that voted against the whole thing, because we didn't trust the RTD people. And that was Val Vehill, Eric Hanson, Will Morose, Brighton City Council, and myself. I think we just did it to make a point, that we're very dissatisfied with the way RTD has treated the North Metro area of town by not spending $125 million, out of $4.7 billion. Not one inch of track has been laid. All that money was spent for rights of way. I mean, I don't, and I think the term, the people at Dr. Cog have a, a way of coming up with some concise ways of referring to certain types of conduct. And I think what they called the actions of RTD as being felony stupidity. And I, I got a big laugh out of people, I think, and it really, it was kind of funny, but really, it's not funny. And now I've heard that maybe the reason that we hadn't gotten any money is because Adams County did vote against the whole thing back in '04. We did. I think people of Adams County, maybe they knew that we weren't going to get any money out of it. But this is just an issue that keeps going on and on. Every year, it gets presented to Dr. Cog, they want our approval. I don't know. Anyway, we had a, an open house at the Reunion Volunteer Fire Department Station on Saturday. It was very good, attended by a lot of people. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Marino?
No report.
Okay. I'm going to be quick, I'm just going to run down where it was. Met Don Hunt, who's the new CDOT director. Also went to Mary Hodge's back-to-school night at Prairie View. Also went, and I know a couple of the others of us went also, to meet with the governor at North Metro's event on Thursday night. Natural Meets had a tournament on Saturday. I want to thank Mr. Cordero and Mr. Aker for being there. It was the support of prostate cancer, which is kind of close to my family. Also went to the State of the City for Denver, where Commerce City actually got recognized by the new mayor, which was really nice. But probably the best thing I did was to get Lynn Bartels into town and take her on a tour. And that went extremely well. I don't think she'll be saying anything mean to Mr. Marino or any of us again. So if there be no further business come before this, council will be adjourned. Please drive careful.